The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. Could I remind everybody that Commissioner McEwan is with me in Sydney today, and Commissioner Galbally is joining the hearing from Melbourne. I'll commence with the acknowledgement of country. We wish to acknowledge the Wurundjeri people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians of this land, and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also acknowledge the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin Nation, upon whose lands Commissioner Galbally is joining this hearing. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to all First Nations people attending in person today, as well as those who are following the hearing on the live stream. Yes, Ms Eastman?
Good morning, Commissioners and good morning to everyone following the proceedings. Commissioners, you'll see that Ms Cuddey is in the room and ready to give her evidence. But before we do so, I think Ms Viness wishes to give you an update on the progress of some submissions that you've asked for.
Thank you. Chair?
Have you got a microphone? Yes, all right, thank you.
There was a discussion on Monday in respect of the ombudsman.
Yes.
And I indicated that we would provide submissions. They will be provided in writing with you, I hope shortly, but certainly today.
Thank you very much. Ms Eastman?
Yes, so Ms Cuddey needs to take her oath or affirmation.
Yes. Would you be good enough, Ms Cuddey, to follow the instructions of my associate, who will administer either the oath or affirmation, as the case may be? The oath, thank you.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes, or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Ms Cuddey, and thank you for your appearance today. Ms Eastman will now ask you some questions.
Thank you, Ms Cuddey. Your name is Caroline Cuddey?
Yes.
And you are presently the Chief Executive Officer of Sunnyfield Disability Services.
Yes.
You've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission, is that right?
Yes.
And you've got three corrections that you wish to make to the statement. So have you got a copy with you there?
Of the statement, yes.
Right. The first correction is to paragraph 46. That's on page three. And just confirm, the correction that you want to make is in the final line, and you want to delete 2018 and replace that with 2017. Is that right?
Correct.
The next correction is at paragraph 174. Turn that page. That is on page 37. And the correction is at sub-paragraph F. And you'll see that there is a redaction that refers to Melissa. Would it help if I just read the paragraph and then you can let me know if the correction that identifies is correct?
Thank you.
So the paragraph should read, "In early January 2018, Sunnyfield also became aware that Melissa's guardian had separately reported the matter to the police." So the correction is not that Melissa had reported to the police, but Melissa's guardian. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
And the next correction that you wish to make is to paragraph 180B. That's on page 38. And there are two corrections in that paragraph. On the second line, the correction is to the date. So instead of 2 October 2018, that should be 2 October 2019. Is that right?
Yes.
And on the final line in paragraph 180B, the date of 23 or 24 September 2018 should be 23 or 24 September 2019.
Yes.
Now, those are the corrections that your solicitors have provided to the Royal Commission. Have you had a chance to read over the statement recently?
Yes.
And have you identified any other corrections or any other amendments that you wish to make to the statement?
Not to my knowledge.
Can you tell the Royal Commission that your statement, what you've said in your statement, is true?
Yes, it is true.
Now, with respect to your statement, the organisation of your statement is in response to a notice issued to Sunnyfield to provide a statement. And if we look at the structure of your statement, your statement answers the particular questions raised in the Royal Commission's notice to give a statement. Is that right?
Yes.
So Commissioners, the approach taken in this statement is that Ms Cuddey has not set out in a chronological fashion the various events, but she sought in this statement to respond to the particular questions raised in the Royal Commission's notice.
Yes, thank you. I think that's apparent from the form of the statement.
And Commissioners, you will have also observed that there are a number of documents that are identified by the Royal Commission's coding numbers in the statement. And Commissioners, you have a copy of those documents in tender bundle A. And when we get to various documents, I will take you to the particular document as it appears in tender bundle A. There are some documents in tender bundle B and C that we'll need to take you to. And then there is a small set of documents that haven't made their way into the tender bundle, but have been produced to the Royal Commission and will take you to those documents in due course.
And have we made arrangements for Ms Cuddey to have access to the documents when they're referred to?
We have. You'll see that our exemplary paralegal from the OSA team is sitting with the Commissioner's associates.
Is that the only exemplary?
They're all exemplary, but we have a hard copy. And so as I reach different parts of Ms Cuddey's statement and we need to refer to particular documents, then a hard copy will be given to Ms Cuddey as we travel along. So for those following the webcast, today may raise some frustration for you that many of the documents that we will use in the hearing today have not been the subject of redactions. And for that reason, I will not be putting up many of the documents on the screen. So it may be difficult for people to follow, but I will do my best to ensure that I describe the relevant documents. And if I take Ms Cuddey to a part of the relevant document, I'll take time to identify those parts of the document that I'm taking her to. So I suppose I'm asking people following the webcast and those in the room that it may be a little slower than expected, but please be patient. And as I said at the beginning of the hearing, we will tender documents in due course. And so the documents that we touch on during the course of this examination may be tendered, subject obviously to the Commissioner's directions. So that's just a little bit of how I hope we can organise the morning and throughout the day. All right, Ms Cuddey, can I come to you now? So you are, as you've said, the CEO of Sunnyfield. How long have you held that role?
Since November 2010.
And you tell the Royal Commission at paragraph four of your statement that prior to assuming the role of CEO of Sunnyfield, you were a national general manager for an Australasian fast-moving consumer goods company for seven years. So I'm intrigued by what is a fast-moving consumer goods company?
It's a food company.
And so was that like in a hospitality setting or in a retail setting? Can you help us a little more? I just want to understand your background and your work experience.
Certainly. It provides food services, or food products, I should say, both retail and food, well, to retailers and to food service organisations. So provides those products in Australia and New Zealand.
And you don't want to mention the name of the company?
I don't think that's appropriate.
And then before that, you were an executive director for a large aged care provider, and that's a position that you held for about 11 years. Is that right?
That's correct.
You've told the Royal Commission that you have over 13 years' experience in the disability support services sector. And is all of that experience in your work at Sunnyfield?
Yes, it is.
You haven't worked for any other disability support service provider?
No.
And you haven't worked for any relevant government agency that is involved in either delivering services in the past or regulating the disability support sector? Is that right?
That's correct.
Now, you have followed the proceedings over the last few days, is that right?
That's correct.
And you haven't been here in the hearing room, is that right?
That's correct.
But you followed it on the Royal Commission's webcast?
Yes.
So you've had an opportunity to listen to the evidence of Eliza, Sophia and Jenny Peord yesterday?
That's correct.
Now, I want to ask you a little bit about your qualifications. And with respect to the qualifications, you tell the Royal Commission that you have a certificate in governance and risk management from the Governance Institute of Australia, and you identify the date 2020. All right. So can I first of all ask you, what is the Governance Institute of Australia?
It's an organisation that specifically is involved in looking at organisational governance and also risk management. So I undertook a course over a number of modules and completed a certificate as that was an area that I thought was of interest to myself in my role.
What was the nature of the course that you undertook? Was it an online course or did it require in-person training?
Both.
And how long did the course take?
It was a number of modules. I actually had started it pre-COVID-19 and completed it online at the end of 2020.
And what was it that caused you to undertake this particular course on governance and risk management in 2020?
It's an area of interest to me. I'm very interested in organisational governance, looking at how one can improve that. There have been other Royal Commissions, the Banking Royal Commission, those things to improve. And that's part of my approach to look at continuous improvement. I was also interested more in terms of governance and risk management, and that was a very useful course.
Had you done any specific training or courses on governance and risk management before undertaking this course in 2020?
I've undertaken the Australian Institute of Company Directors graduate programme, and I've undertaken a number of short courses previously.
But I'm asking you specifically, not the general courses that you may have done, but specific courses or training on governance and risk management.
Not particularly on risk management, but I have undertaken some one-day or half-day courses with the Australian Institute of Company Directors.
Would it be fair to say that by 2020, it wasn't just a matter of your interest, but that you reached a point where you felt you needed to increase your understanding, skills and learning on governance and risk management?
I've always had an approach to continuous improvement. I've also been, had the privilege to attend the Stanford Not-for-Profit Leaders Programme. So I've always taken an approach to continuous learning. There was the opportunity to undertake this course. It's an area in our organisation that I think is evolving, and I wanted to know more about it.
Right. I'd better ask you shortly about the structure of Sunnyfield and your reporting requirements to the board. And I also want to ask you about how your performance management is measured. But before I do that, it may be of assistance to the Royal Commissioners to understand a little bit more about Sunnyfield and its organisation. So I want to turn to that topic now. Now, you've told the Royal Commissioners in paragraph eight that Sunnyfield is a member-based, four-purpose, not-for-profit registered charity providing support services for over 1,200 people living with disability in New South Wales and the ACT. All right. So first of all, I want to ask you what is meant by a member-based organisation?
So Sunnyfield has a very proud history of being formed by family members nearly 70 years ago now who have children with disability. And back in the 1950s, there were not a lot of supports for people who had a child with a disability. And so a group of families got together and they initially formed an association, which subsequently became, it was the Sunnyfield Association, which subsequently became Sunnyfield. And our constitution holds dear the foundations of the organisation. So we are an organisation that is very passionate about supporting people with a disability.
Can I just interrupt you? I just want to know about what member-based means?
Yes. So member-based means that the foundations of our organisation as being member-based means that any of our clients, their guardian or family member may choose to become a member of Sunnyfield. They would apply to the board and the board would make a decision in regards to their membership. We currently have over 500 members, I believe.
All right. So a member is someone who represents either a person with a disability, is that right?
Correct.
Or a connection through a family member of a person with disability?
Yes.
And when you talk about the constitution, you've provided to the Royal Commission, and Commissioners, this is Hearing Bundle B, Volume One, Tab One. That's a copy of the Sunnyfield Constitution incorporating amendments up to 25 October 2018. Just give you that document. And the description that you just gave in relation to members, that's set out in the constitution at clause seven on page seven of the constitution. Is that right?
Yes.
And clause 7.4 explains, "Membership of Sunnyfield may be granted as either a family member or general member." That describes the two classes, is that right?
Correct.
All right. I'll just ask you to put that constitution back. We may come back to that. Now, in terms of the organisation being a not-for-profit registered charity, does that reflect Sunnyfield's origins? I think I've seen either variously 66 or 70 years ago that it was set up by family members of people with disability to provide services for people with disability. And the model that it used was a charitable organisation?
It is, to my knowledge, a registered charity. It does seek fundraising from the community. And, you know, it works within each of the communities, and that's its basis.
And what does this mean in terms of the governance and operation for Sunnyfield as a not-for-profit registered charity? Are there any particular rules that you have to observe?
Certainly, we need to comply with the Charitable Charities Act. And as a not-for-profit, it also means that any earnings for the organisation are retained earnings, and those earnings are not distributed to any shareholders, so that there is no distribution of funds to other parties outside of the organisation. And that reinvestment of funds is to continue the services into the future of the organisation for the benefit of people with disability.
Right. So as you know, the Royal Commission's inquiry is in relation to the particular house in Western Sydney, that is Melissa, Carl and Chen's home. But before we turn to that, it may assist the Royal Commissioners to have an understanding about Sunnyfield's operations generally. At paragraph nine, you set out the core services. And you say that for shared independent living, Sunnyfield operates 48 homes. Now, is that a reference to what sometimes is called a group home?
That is terminology that used to be used in the past. They would be called shared, we call them shared independent living homes. And we see those homes as the home of the client.
So in terms of those 48 homes, you tell the Royal Commission that there are 215 residents who occupy those homes, is that right?
Yes.
Are the homes all three or four-bedroom homes?
The largest home we have is five residents. There is one home, I think, that has five residents with a sort of semi-detached, separate, one-bedroom apartment. But that is, the homes will range from two residents to five residents.
So the smallest home is a two-bedroom or a two-person residence, is that right?
And it may depend on, there's the house design and how many residents it could have. For example, the house that we're talking about at this commission actually has five bedrooms, but there are currently only three occupants.
Now, in terms of the 48 homes, does Sunnyfield own the properties for all of those 48 homes?
So Sunnyfield has a mixed portfolio. The organisation has set up a separate company called Gateway. Gateway is a community housing provider. And we are endeavouring to put our own property portfolio and our shared living homes in Gateway and meet all of the compliance standards for the community housing provider.
I think you've mentioned later on in your statement about Gateway and some trusts and some of the vehicles used by Sunnyfield. I'm going to come to those a little bit later. But just coming back to the 48 homes,
Yes.
are you able to tell the Royal Commission, just generally with respect to those homes, how many homes that might be relatively new, say, built in the last five years or acquired by Sunnyfield in the last five years?
We have quite a diverse portfolio. We do have 10 houses that were associated with the New South Wales Large Residential Centre Devolution Programme. So we have those 10. And I think we also have a couple more houses that would be newer. But we do have quite a mixed-range portfolio of housing. Needless to say, you know, we continually wanting to improve the quality of the housing stock for people with disability.
And have any of the homes in the 48 homes sort of been acquired from other disability service providers, not government, but private providers?
We have purchased some homes from the open marketplace. We lease some homes. We do have lease arrangements with DCJ, Department of Community and Justice, and we own some homes.
Now, can I ask you a little bit about the 215 residents? I'm going to ask you about each one separately. But with respect to those residents, what is the average period of time that the residents would spend at a Sunnyfield shared independent living residence? An average period of time?
We have some residents who, my understanding, has been with the organisation for, I think, over 30 years, possibly even 40 years.
You say over 30 years?
Yes, we do. So we have some newer residents and we have some very longstanding residents.
What's the average time?
I couldn't answer that question, I'm sorry.
Looking at those 215 residents, are you able to tell the Royal Commission whether those residents living in a Sunnyfield shared independent living setting, that this would be their last place of residence?
If that's their choice, if that would be what they wanted and we could provide the services safely to them, then we would endeavour to do that.
So if any of the 215 people who are currently residents said to Sunnyfield that they want to stay in the home for the rest of their lives, then that would be an option open to them, is that right?
Likewise, in all of these situations, it needs to be one of mutual benefit. If that was the desires of the residents, also the desires of the family, and we felt that we could provide them the quality and the services and that that was a relationship of mutual benefit, then certainly that has been the case.
Does Sunnyfield have a policy in relation to transitioning people with disability who are residents in a Sunnyfield home to different types of accommodation? And I haven't made that clear, but what I mean by that is that somebody may come into a Sunnyfield home, and while they're at that home, you work with the residents to look at other options. That the home is really a transition point rather than a final destination. Do you have a policy around transitions of that kind?
We don't, to my knowledge, have a policy. We do have some services which we would call short-term accommodation.
Yes. I want to get, sorry to interrupt you. I think they're the three short-term accommodations. But I just, I want to focus just on the 48 homes. And if I didn't make myself clear, I apologise. But looking at those 48 homes and the residents in those 48 homes, does Sunnyfield have a policy to actively look at assisting any of those residents to transition out or move to different forms of accommodation? Or do you see it as a more permanent arrangement?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Have any of the residents, to the best of your knowledge, made inquiries with Sunnyfield to say, "I'm not just after short-term accommodation, but I want to develop my independence and my choices while I'm at Sunnyfield to look at what might be other options for me in the future"?
If that was a person's goal and that was what they were seeking, then we would be very happy to assist them in that.
How would they identify that goal while they're at a Sunnyfield home?
The primarily focus of people setting their goals is through the NDIS. And so in people's service agreements, their goals are an attachment, as I think the first anexure to their service agreement. And we actively support and work with that person to achieve their goal.
Is there a commercial benefit or a commercial interest for Sunnyfield keeping the residents in a Sunnyfield home?
I suppose you could put that perspective. But at the end of the day, we focus on a person-centred, active support model. And if someone was not happy and that was not their wishes, we would certainly support them in what their goals and their wishes are.
I suppose I'm asking you a little bit beyond what's sort of happy and what their wishes are, but to look at a different model of the way somebody might want to live other than living in a group home. So I accept some people would like to live in a group home and with others.
Yes.
But others might want different options.
Correct.
And so what I'm trying to explore with you is, once you're at the Sunnyfield home, how are those other options explored? And am I right in understanding, sorry I've got a lot of questions here, but right in understanding that unless it's in the NDIS goals, there isn't another way in which those objectives or goals could be identified?
I think you ask a very good question. It is a strategic issue and that we have discussed it in our strategy around how can we provide more affordable housing options for people with disability? I think that there is, I think there's about a 9% vacancy rate across the sector to do with... to do with specialist disability accommodation. A lot of times, people with intellectual disability are not getting any SDA funding, and that's a vexed issue.
Okay, so we're going to use some NDIS jargon, so if we do that, let's, so we're both on the same page on that. So that's specialist disability accommodation, SDA, is that right? What's your understanding of SDA and how does that work?
My understanding of SDA is that it's an NDIS initiative to increase housing stock that's suitable for people with a disability. There is criteria in terms of the design of the house, and there's various levels and standards of the design with various features. That can then, for a person with a disability who meets the criteria to get SDA funding, it can help them to then go shopping and choose appropriate accommodation to their needs. So, but it means that they would need to potentially have the SDA funding approved in a bus to the category of the house and the way the house is designed.
When you use the word shopping, do you mean that a person with disability can go into the open property market and with their SDA funding then look for accommodation or buy property in the open market?
The, they could do that, I would imagine, but I think it also is, there are people, to my knowledge, that have designed and built SDA housing, and that is available too in the open market. And that SDA funding enables the affordability for them to go into that type of housing stock that's specially designed to meet the needs of a person with disability, and there are various different categories.
Can I come back to the forty-eight homes and the two hundred and fifteen residents? Now, this aspect of Sunnyfield's services constitute nine percent of the total services that Sunnyfield operates, is that right?
Yes.
And that nine percent of your services also constitute almost half of Sunnyfield's overall income, forty-seven percent of the income, is that right?
I believe so. And I believe it's also the NDIS, the people who are accessing shared independent living and SDA is a high proportion of the NDIS budget.
That figure that I've given you appears in the 2020 annual report, and if you're uncertain about that, I can take you to the document. But I think you've agreed that it's almost half of the Sunnyfield revenue, because revenue's probably better than income, is that right?
I would believe so.
Ms Eastman, I understand from what I've seen that there are two documents, actually. There's an annual report for 2020 that does not include detailed financial information, and there are financial statements for the, and I assume you're referring to the financial statements.
I am, and I'm going to come to the annual report and the financial statements in a lot of detail.
There are, in fact, two separate documents.
I'm probably very slowly trying to set the scene here, but Chair, I will come to those documents in due course. Can I suggest to you that if one looks at the forty-eight homes and the revenue for Sunnyfield with respect to the forty-eight homes, would you accept there is an incentive in maintaining the forty-eight homes and those homes being occupied for Sunnyfield? That's an incentive from a revenue perspective to keep those homes operating and occupied.
I believe there could be. I think it depends on your perspective, whether that, as an organisation, you're purely looking at the financial situation, or whether you're actually looking at the clients and their wants, their wishes and what suits them best.
Now, while you're on wishes and what suits them best, you've heard the expression 'choice and control'.
Yes.
And do you understand that to be a phrase that reflects the ethos of the National Disability Insurance Scheme?
Yes.
And what's your understanding of choice and control with respect to the residents, the two hundred and fifteen residents who live in shared independent living in the forty-eight homes operated by Sunnyfield? What does choice and control mean for them?
I'd just like to say that Sunnyfield actually contributed funding to the campaign to get the NDIS up and away, and we're big supporters of choice and control for people with disability.
Can I come back to my question?
Mm-hmm.
Can you answer that?
Yes, certainly. So choice and control means that each resident and their guardian or family member who may be assisting and working with them has the choice of whether they want to live in that home or not, and they have the control of whether they want to live in that home or not. At the same time, that works within our contractual arrangements.
Do they have the choice about who they live with?
Yes, we do. We do a lot of work when it comes to any vacancies, and it takes a very long time to do a transition to make sure that it is something that all of the residents would want and like, and we take their feedback and their family's feedback into great consideration.
How do you do that at a practical level? And the Royal Commission has heard a little bit about the residents at the Western Sydney house. If those residents are generally reflective of the cohort of the two hundred and fifteen residents in the forty-eight homes operated by Sunnyfield, can you explain how choice and control might work on a practical level?
So is that in regards to a new resident coming into the home?
Well, let's say we can take a new resident, so how would choice and control work?
Well, my understanding is in the home in Western Sydney specifically related to this commission, is that the express wishes of the families is that the cohort is not increased from the current three residents, and that when one of the previous residents exited, could we then approach the NDIS to have the home considered as a three-person home, which I understood that's what we did.
But how do you work out or ask the residents what they want? How do you do that practically?
It depends on each individual resident. There certainly is their person's goals and in their NDIS plan, which we respect. It's also working individually with each client and also with their family, understanding what their needs and wants are, what their wishes are. So we do try and tailor our supports to, and the roster of care is tailored directly to what the families or the person has requested, and that roster is designed around what they've asked for.
What happens for a person who doesn't have a family to speak on their behalf or about them?
This is a real challenging issue. We do, we have an advocacy policy, which you have seen, but, you know, we have clients who can speak for themselves and we will sit and support and encourage them, but particularly it can be a challenge where, you know, trustee and guardian are involved, or where the person doesn't have the representation that they need.
Of the two hundred and fifteen residents that you've described in your statement, how many of those residents are people who have no family or guardian to speak on their behalf?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me.
And with respect to the involvement of family, what if there's a conflict between what the family thinks might be best for their family member and the person with disability and what he or she would like? How is that navigated on choice and control?
That is a challenging area, I agree. We try and work directly with the client and with the family and try and, you know, be respectful about the different views to try and come to an agreement of what is, you know, what is suitable, but that can be difficult sometimes.
Now, the concept of choice and control, you understand that that's choice and control for the person with disability, that's right?
Yes.
It's not choice and control for the service provider, is it?
I think there is always, in any agreement, and I think this is a very positive thing, that it should be of mutual benefit.
That's a different thing, isn't it? Mutual benefit is a different thing to choice and control.
Yes, I mean, choice and control is very much the language of the NDIS, and I truly do respect that language.
But if a service provider says it has choice and control, that's a very different thing, isn't it, to a person with disability who receives services? Sense of choice and control, would you accept that?
Yes, I would.
So if a service provider says it has choice, then that suggests that the service provider can choose who it will accommodate and who it won't?
I think that at the end of the day, service providers need to make an assessment as to whether they have the skills and capability and the staffing, the circumstances, to be able to provide the services in good faith. I don't think it would be a good thing to enter into any agreement if the service provider felt that they couldn't provide the appropriate services.
And if a service provider says that choice and control and the control aspect is something that is above a benefit to the service provider, how does that sit with the person with the disability having independence if it's the service provider who exercises control?
Yeah, no, I think the word 'control' is not a word that I would specifically use.
So if, for example, Sunnyfield has said on an occasion that it has choice and control, that would not be language that you would expect to see Sunnyfield use describing it having choice and control?
Yes, and I understand that was said in regards to the residents at this particular house.
So you heard evidence from Eliza this week, where, and we'll get to the, whether you call it, the notice of cessation of services or eviction, but you're aware, aren't you, that she has given some evidence earlier this week about Sunnyfield saying that flexibility of choice and control is conferred on both the participant and the service provider? So you remember her saying that?
Yes, I do.
And if, you need to have a look at the document.
Let me see.
It's tender bundle A, part, part two at tab thirty. We might just look at this now, Commissioner, so I don't forget, come back to it later. Can I just draw your attention to that first paragraph of the letter? And tell me when you've had a chance just to read that to yourself. So you recognise this as a letter sent from the General Manager Shared Living to Eliza, and it has the date thirteen June twenty eighteen?
Yes.
And the General Manager Shared Living says in the letter, the decision does not need to be mutually agreed, and nor does Sunnyfield need to provide any reasons for exercising its option to terminate the agreement. This approach is consistent with the underlying ethos of the NDIS, where flexibility of choice and control is conferred on both the participant and the service provider. That's what the letter says.
Yes.
Henri, were you aware of the contents of this letter on or around the thirteenth of June?
I was aware, we were writing a letter, yes.
Did you approve a draft letter to go to Eliza?
I can't specifically recall that.
To the best of your recollection, did you see a letter in this form before it was sent to Eliza?
I cannot, I can't comment because I don't specifically recall that.
And do you accept that the sentence that says this approach is consistent with the underlying ethos of the NDIS, where flexibility or choice and control is conferred on both the participant and the service provider, is wrong?
I think it's certainly taken out of context, yes.
It shouldn't have been described in that way, should it?
No, choice and control under the NDIS specifically relates to the person with a disability.
And do you know if anyone has ever told Eliza that what was said in this letter, that choice and control is conferred on both the participant and the service provider, was not right?
I don't believe anyone has.
Why not?
I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you. Right, now, I apologise for doing a little bit of a detour. Can I bring you back to your statement at paragraph nine? So we've addressed the forty-eight residences and the two hundred and fifteen residents. In terms of accommodation services, Sunnyfield also operates three short-term accommodation services, and you say a fluid number of residents, and you've told the Royal Commission, as at the end of March this year, there are a hundred and one clients, and that represents almost a fifty percent increase as at thirty June, so an increase of forty-eight clients. Can you tell us what is the nature of short-term accommodation services and what can you tell us about the three short-term accommodation services?
So Sunnyfield has currently three and we're contemplating a fourth. These are services for people who are seeking a whole variety of different needs. We have some younger people who access these services, and that is an opportunity for them to learn about living out of home and gain new skills.
So just how, when you talk younger people, what age group are you talking about?
We have, I think, a children's service. These would be above, these would be school-aged children, but we also have some youth as well who may be accessing those services. And of course, we don't have a mixed cohort at the same time. We have other areas where there are people who are in dire need of accommodation for various circumstances, and where we can, where it's something that they choose and where we can assist them, they would utilise those services. It may be that someone is, you know, in a situation where unfortunately their family's not able to support them for a variety of very valid reasons, we would help them as well on that service there. So it's quite, very dependent on the individual, and what we're trying to do there is to, usually, it's very much a transition situation in trying to create an environment of trust, support, and where they can feel safe at home, and also, you know, prepare themselves for transitioning to some other form of accommodation.
And so these are all services for people with disability?
That's correct.
And is it only a service for people with cognitive or intellectual disability?
Sunnyfield's client base is primarily that, but they may have acquired their disability in a number of different ways.
Can I ask you about the community services? So this, Commissioner, this is paragraph nine B. So with respect to community services, you have one thousand one hundred and ninety-two clients from twenty-one community services hubs, and that's an increase in twenty-twenty of eight hundred and seventy-nine. So that's a very significant increase over the last year, is that right?
We have been, you know, expanding our services and been working with people to fulfil their needs.
So what are the nature of the community services provided to the over one thousand clients? And can you tell us a little bit about the twenty-one community services hubs?
So there is a range of services that we support in the community. We do in-home services, where we're providing services to clients in their own home. Some of those services are in, you know, in... Um, some of those services are in, uh, you know, in regional areas. Um, we also then have community hubs where if people prefer, they can come to, uh, uh, a centre. Um, and there is, uh, you know, infrastructure in that centre.
What does that, what does that mean, infrastructure? Like, is it a house, is it a community hall? Can you explain a little bit about it?
It can be very wide and diverse depending on the community we're in. Um, we have, uh, facilities that are in rural areas. Uh, we have some facilities that are in church halls. We have a variety of different facilities that depends on, um, the locality. Uh, we try and very much work with the local community, um, and develop those services. The sort of infrastructure could be, uh, computers, sensory room, uh, various equipment, uh, craft, activity programmes, uh, we kitchens where people, uh, they're flexible kitchens where people can be involved in cooking. They're very much about where people can build and develop their skills, uh, learn and also have fun.
Are these, um, would the community services include what's commonly called day programmes?
That would be, yes.
And, uh, all of the community services described in paragraph nine B in effect day programmes?
Yes, but we, I think the, the day programme concept was more or less a nine-to-three concept, where what we're trying to do is offer services at different times of the day, in the evening, for different age cohorts, and tailor those services to, uh, the, the likes and dislikes of the participants.
So looking back at the two hundred and fifteen residents in the forty-eight homes,
Mm-hmm.
Are any of the two hundred and fifteen residents counted in the one thousand one hundred and ninety-two clients using the community services hubs?
I believe there would be some of those, uh, clients. But there would also be clients who utilise other services outside Sunnyfield. Um, I certainly know that the participant who was, um, in the house subject to this inquiry, who left that house, um, that participant comes to one of our hubs, although he has now gone to another provider in terms of accommodation. So it's really around what the clients and their families would like to choose.
But you can't say of the two hundred and fifteen, how many of the two hundred and fifteen residents would also be clients of the day programmes or the community services?
I don't know exactly. Uh, also, there would be some of the people who, uh, utilise the shared independent living services, who also attend Sunnyfield work in the employment services area.
That's the next, uh, topic. So in nine C, you identify employment services. So Sunnyfield operates three Australian disability enterprises?
Yes.
Now, the old language for that was sheltered workshop, is that right? And that's not language that we would use anymore, but for people to understand. So with respect to the three ADEs, uh, where are they located? And what is the nature of the ADEs that, uh, Sunnyfield operates?
Uh, we have an Australian Disability Enterprise in Mount Jewett. We have one at Chatswood and also one at Alambi Heights.
And what's the nature of the work performed by the hundred and ninety-five supported employees?
So the nature of the work varies at each site. Um, Sunnyfield has, um, what we would call primary therapeutic goods administration packaging work. We have secondary, uh, therapeutic goods administration packaging work. And that's where we have, um, arrangements with some, uh, companies that supply over-the-counter, um, uh, vitamins and minerals and things like that. Uh, we do quite a variety of a range of different work. Um, and I have to say the employees do a fantastic job.
Now, then finally, in looking at the services over the page, you say the other services, support, coordination and implementation of NDIS plans for three hundred and twenty-one clients. And this has also been an increase of two hundred and twenty-three clients over twenty-twenty. So another significant increase in the nature of the services provided, is that right?
Yes, so we run our support coordination as a separate, uh, unit, uh, separate to the other areas of the organisation. Um, and that is something that, when the NDIS came into being, was a new service. And, uh, so that was an area that we felt that we could offer support and benefit to clients. So we have quite a number of people who choose Sunnyfield. Um, and we assist them in that support coordination process where they choose, so.
Now, you've told the Royal Commission that Sunnyfield employs over one thousand one hundred and seventy-four staff in New South Wales and the ACT. Uh, if you can, how many of those staff members work for Sunnyfield in the shared independent living in the forty-eight homes with the two hundred and fifteen residents? Can you give me that breakdown or not?
I apologise, I do not have that number with me, but I could get that information if you say.
So is that, if, um?
It would be a large proportion.
But that's information that you can provide us with a, a breakdown of the staffing in terms of how many of the over one thousand work in the, uh, the hu- the homes?
Yes, no, we could provide that information.
Miss Eastman, before we go further, could I just go back to nine, nine C? The one hundred and ninety-five supported employees, how many of them are included in the two hundred and fifteen residents or are those two separate?
There would be some, but I can't tell you off, off the top of my head. Um, apologies, but I don't exactly know that number right now.
It, yes, that I would appreciate, yeah, thank you.
Uh, now, I'm just conscious of the time, and before we break, I just want to deal with one, um, matter, which is what you've set out in paragraph twelve of your statement. So is, tell the Royal Commission, Sunnyfield's priority is and always has been the wellbeing of our clients. Why, what, why use the expression wellbeing? To reflect a very sort of care model, doesn't it?
Um, I think, uh, and it's not meant to be disrespectful to anybody in any shape or form. Um, primarily, as I said before, our clients are people with intellectual disability. Um, and I think that, uh, we do hold a duty of care quite, uh, strong within Sunnyfield. Um, and, but that duty of care is not through, uh, you know, undermining people's dignity of risk. Uh, but the organisation does have a very strong human rights-based approach to our support of our clients. And our goal is to see them being safe, uh, healthy and happy and fulfilled in their lives, um, the same that we would expect for our parents or our children or for each other.
You're aware, aren't you, that there are a number of different theoretical models around disability? There's a, a medical model, you're aware of that?
Yes.
Uh, a social model?
Yes.
A charitable model?
Mm-hmm.
And a rights-based model.
Mm-hmm.
Sunnyfield's history is one of a charitable model with respect to disability. How do you describe Sunnyfield's approach to disability in terms of models? Is it still a charitable model?
I think our organisation has evolved. As I said previously, we were great supporters, and we still are, of the NDIS. We could see how the previous systems were flawed. And I think the organisation has evolved. Um, I think, you know, it comes from very much the families caring for, for, uh, clients. But I think it's very much moved. And, uh, while we may not be perfect, and I'll be very honest to say that, we very strongly uphold the human rights, dignity and respect, um, and people's choice and control. Uh, we don't get that right every day, but that's what we aspire to do and we continue to do so.
You would accept that language around disability, uh, is important?
Mm-hmm.
And language that reflects the values you've just described is important? And also language that might convey a charity model or a paternalistic model? That, that would be language you'd try to avoid, is that right?
Yes, but as I said, we don't always get it right.
Now, you've said in paragraph twelve, um, and you referred to the mission, vision and values. I'll take you to that document perhaps after the break. And, uh, you also refer to the Sunnyfield Way, and I want to take you to that document after the break. But you talk in this paragraph about treating all clients as equals and apply person-centred support to facilitate and help our clients in achieving their goals and living positive and beneficial lives. Now, in terms of person-centred approach, Sunnyfield has a policy that sets that out, is that right?
I believe so.
Now, if I could ask you to look at hearing bundle B, volume one, behind tab thirteen.
Thank you.
Now, just take a, a moment to read that to yourself and tell me when you've had a, a chance to glance at that.
Thank you, yes, okay.
So, uh, you've signed off on the policy, and it has December twenty nineteen as its date?
Yes.
Prior to December twenty nineteen, did you have a policy in this form? Or does the person-centred active support policy represent a policy that has been in operation since December twenty nineteen, but not before?
We have a series of, these are poster policies that are hung up in most of our locations at Sunnyfield. This is one of those. Um, Sunnyfield actually has had a very strong person-centred active support approach uh, prior to me becoming CEO. So I think that, um, Helen Sanderson was one of the champions of person, person-centred and active support approach. And Sunnyfield was one of the early adopters prior to my employment. And we still continue to have a strong, uh, position around this.
So what was it about preparing this policy, which I assume, uh, was undertaken sometime before December twenty nineteen? What was the reason for preparing this policy around that time?
We actually prepared a whole series of policies, so we refreshed all.
Sorry, uh, and we will look at some of the other policies. I just want you to focus on this particular policy. Why this policy being developed prior to December twenty nineteen?
It wasn't particularly singled out as an individual policy to review.
Was it in response to a particular incident or incidents that occurred?
No, it wasn't. We reviewed every single one of our posters for, um, all of our locations. Uh, the board had requested that we have longer policies. And they had requested for all of our policies that we put around the organisation as poster policies, that we actually, um, uh, make them, uh, more succinct and have them so they're easier to communicate on our walls. It wasn't in response of a specific incident.
Uh, with this policy, when you say a poster policy and it's on the walls?
Yes.
What walls of what?
Uh, in meeting rooms, in each of our community hubs. Um, this is a policy that is available for staff. This is, uh, one of our core policies at Sunnyfield.
Is this a policy that is provided to any of the residents of the homes operated by Sunnyfield?
Uh, I believe it would be.
Is it in an easy-read form?
Um, I'm not aware of that, I'd have to check.
Do you know how it's provided to any residents in any of the homes?
It's certainly not put up as posters on the wall in any of our homes, that's for sure.
How would the residents know about this policy?
I'd need to check on that.
Uh, is the policy provided to any of the families, guardians or advocates for people who are residents of the homes?
I believe this policy is on our website, but I'm not aware that it's particularly mailed to them or distributed in that fashion.
When, uh, you gave some evidence earlier about somebody exercising choice and control and perhaps being a new prospective resident, uh, from December twenty nineteen, uh, are the prospective residents provided with a copy of this policy?
I, I couldn't answer that question specifically. There is, I think, um, a kit. Um, there's a, when there is a new client, they are provided with information and also a welcome kit. And there is also, uh, a pack of information sent to parents. But I couldn't specifically tell you if this was in there.
And just before we break, is this policy a type of policy that you require all staff to comply with?
Yes.
And in terms of complying with this policy, is this a policy that is incorporated into the terms and conditions of an employee's contract of employment?
This, I believe, is embedded in our code of conduct. And our code of conduct is part of people's employment contracts.
Um, Commissioners, if that's a convenient time, it's ten past eleven, and I'm trying to stick to the schedule as much as possible, uh, so that we'd have a, a twenty-minute adjournment now.
We can, at the risk of frustrating your timetable and possibly you, I've got a, just a couple of questions I want to answer. Um, the document that Miss Eastman has just taken you to, I just want to understand your evidence. Is it your evidence that there was a similar document that was produced by Sunnyfield prior to December two thousand and nineteen?
I would believe so.
And you'll be able to produce such a document so that we can see what was in existence prior to December two thousand and nineteen?
Yeah, I, I, I think there, there would have been a document.
All right, well, that's something you can perhaps take on notice.
Certainly.
And just something that emerges from some of the questions Miss Eastman asked you. I notice that the revenue for the year ended thirty June two thousand and twenty includes sale of goods of ten point five million dollars. What, what goods were sold?
Um, that's our employment services area. So we have commercial contracts, as I mentioned, with, um, pharmaceutical companies and other businesses. And so, um, there is revenue that comes in from that. And then there's also the cost of goods sold. So it could be, you know, we're meet fulfilling contracts and that would be that revenue.
And I noticed from the same report that the cost of goods sold was three point five million. So does that mean that there was a profit of seven million?
No, that would be the actual, um, you know, any plastic bottles or packaging and things like that. In addition to, that would also be labour.
Sorry?
Would be the cost of labour.
And that would, cost would be of whose labour?
Uh, it would be the cost of staff and also supporting employees.
Thank you. Yes, well, it's now eleven fifteen, so I've taken you three minutes out of your schedule, so we'll resume at eleven, uh, thirty-five.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Thank you. Um, it's cut, it's often happened in a break, I remember things I meant to ask you. So I just need you to go back to paragraph nine. And you've identified in paragraph nine the one hundred and ninety-five supported employees in the ADEs, three ADEs. Do you remember that?
Yes.
And then I asked you about the number of employees for Sunnyfield generally, so that's the one thousand one hundred and seventy-four. And I think you're going to give me the breakdown at some point, and it's not urgent, of the number of employees working in the homes. Can I also ask you, do, with the one hundred and ninety-five supported employees who's identified in nine C, are they included in the count of employees of the one thousand one hundred and seventy-four?
I believe they are not included in that count.
They're not included?
I believe so.
Why not?
They could be, but we felt in this situation, it wasn't in any way meant to be disrespectful to them, but we thought that that would be clearer and not double counting.
Okay, but you don't explain that in paragraph ten as to whether the one hundred and ninety-five supported employees were not included in what is described as one thousand one hundred and seventy-four staff, do you?
No, but I believe that that is the case.
Is the reason you haven't included those one hundred and ninety-five supported employees as staff is that you really see them as clients more than employees?
That could be true, but they're also paid employees. So, I didn't want to in any shape or form, you know, create an impression that I wasn't providing the correct information.
Right, thank you for that. And if you need to clarify that or provide any further information about the status of that one ninety-five supported employees, then I'm happy for you to take that on notice and to give us an update over the next couple of days. The next topic that I want to turn to is to assist the commissioners to have some understanding of the governance and the senior leadership within Sunnyfield. So, that's the next topic that I want to turn to. So, I want to start with the board of Sunnyfield. And you've described in paragraph thirteen of the statement that the board of Sunnyfield are volunteers and they are not remunerated. And then to understand a bit more about the board, we need to then turn to page seventy-six.
Of? Of?
Ms Cuddey's statement.
My apologies, I don't have the same numbering system because my my statement is in larger font for to help me with my eyesight.
Would paragraphs help?
Yes, please, thank you kindly.
So, paragraph three, three, six. So, I think the commissioner's version and those with the tender bundle version, sorry, the hearing bundle version should be page seventy-six, starting at paragraph three, three, six. So, you tell the Royal Commission that the board is ultimately responsible for overseeing and monitoring the direction of the organisation?
Yes.
And you say Sunnyfield was also one of the first disability service providers to require member representation on the board. And that's the provision of the constitution that we looked at earlier, is that right?
That's my understanding.
Now, in terms of the board's responsibilities, there is a charter that sets out the board's responsibilities, is that right?
Yes, it's a governance charter.
And in terms of what the governance charter says, if I can ask you to turn to paragraph three, six, nine, that's at page eighty-six.
Yes.
And is that the board charter that you've reproduced in that paragraph?
I don't believe it's the full charter, but I believe it is an excerpt from the charter.
If I've overlooked this, please let me know, but I don't think I've seen a board charter in the documents that you have included in your statement. You've referred to the charter at paragraphs three, six, nine and three seventy, but you haven't annexed or included a copy of the charter. So, is there a document that sets out a charter?
There is a document. That document is under review. It has been since last year. The charter is quite an older document now and we have commissioned someone to assist with changing the charter, particularly in light of a principle-based governance model.
So, is that why you haven't included a charter because it's under review?
Not particularly, but if you would like the charter, you're welcome to have a copy of that.
Can I just ask you, just while we're on the topic, so the charter is being reviewed.
It is.
What was the reason for a review of the charter?
Because as I stated, the charter is, my understanding is, I think it's some ten years old now. It has been reviewed in the ten years, but I think that modern governance thinking is to move to a more principle-based approach to governance. And so, we have a particular person and a committee of the board who is reviewing the charter and making recommendations to the board for their future consideration to change that document.
And who's assisting you with that task?
We have a particular gentleman, his name is David Purdu, he's an experienced company secretary.
Now, how many members of the board serve on the Sunnyfield board?
The constitution allows for ten. I believe at the moment there are nine.
And to assist the commissioners understand a little bit about the directors and who sits on the board, can I ask you to look at hearing bundle B, volume one, behind tab six. And you'll see this is the Sunnyfield and its Controlled Entities General Purpose RDR Report for the year ended thirty June two thousand and twenty. You see that? That's on the front page. Ms Cuddey?
Yes, my apologies, yes, on page three of that report.
So, if we turn to page three, this sets out the directors and it describes the director's qualifications, experience and special responsibilities. Now, I'm not going to trouble you or the commissioners in going through each of the directors, but the document accurately, see, the document accurately describe each of the directors in terms of their professional backgrounds and experience. I assume you're familiar with this document?
Yes.
And who is the director who is the member representative on the board?
So, we have a number of member representatives.
Who are they?
Mr Michael Brent. He has a daughter who lives in shared independent living.
With Sunnyfield?
With Sunnyfield. Dr John Carter, I'm not sure at the time of this particular report whether his daughter lived with Sunnyfield, but subsequently she has moved into our services.
He resigned as a director on the twenty-third of April twenty twenty.
He retired, that's correct.
You know, it says resign, but he retired, did he? So, he was at the time a member with a family member?
Yep.
Anyone else?
Ms Melissa Hamel, she is a descendant of the founders of Sunnyfield, which is our patron Brian Widdon. The Widdon family were part of the original group of families who started Sunnyfield. And the patron Brian Widdon, his brother Trevor was a resident of Sunnyfield for a long period of time. So, Melissa is the daughter of Brian Widdon.
And there's a chair of the board?
Oh, sorry, I haven't finished.
Oh, there's still more members?
Yes, there is. Heather Mills, she's recently retired from the board, but her sister also is a resident of the Shared Living Services. And Mr Mike Nichols has a daughter with disability who has been attending some of our community services.
And who's the chair of the board?
The chair of the board is Karen Ingram.
And this describes her being appointed to the board from the seventeenth of March twenty fourteen? That's on page four?
Yes.
And to the best of your knowledge, has she been on the board continuously since that time?
Yes.
And she's described as a partner of Clayton Newts?
Correct.
Now, looking at all of the directors, am I right in understanding that none of the directors are people with intellectual disability?
That is correct. Sorry, I've also missed out our new director's, Ms Vivian Quinn. I believe that she also had a relative that received services from Sunnyfield.
So, none of the members of the board are people with intellectual disability?
Yes, that's my understanding.
And none of the members of the board are people who receive any services from Sunnyfield?
Themselves individually, no.
And looking at the constitution, which we touched on earlier, would you, and if you need to go back to the document, let me know, but I just want to put this proposition to you. There is no requirement in the constitution for the board to have a representative of the residents or the recipients of services on the board, is that right?
Yes, there's no director representation directly of a person with a disability. Sunnyfield's constitution is set up specifically for people with an intellectual disability and the membership is the representation of, and the families are the representation of the clients.
So, it depends on a family member. Can, you're assuming is it that the family member who's a member is the representative of the person with disability?
I'm not assuming that. That's what I believe is in the constitution. And any person who is a family member or a carer or guardian of one of our clients is able to apply for membership.
And why is it that there are no directors who are people with intellectual disability or people who are recipients of the services of Sunnyfield?
Because that's the way the constitution was set up.
When was the constitution set up?
Oh, gosh, I would imagine the original constitution goes back to the nineteen fifties, but it has been updated.
The document we looked at a little earlier was updated, I think, as till late twenty eighteen. Has there ever been any consideration in amending the constitution to provide for representation on the board of a person with disability, be it intellectual disability or a person who receives services from Sunnyfield?
Not to my knowledge.
No consideration of that at all?
Not to my knowledge, no. I think that the majority of our clients, I would think nearly all of our clients are people with intellectual disability. And there would be legal matters to do with consent and capacity in terms of governance roles.
Is that the reason?
I could only postulate that.
Well, you're the CEO and I accept you, are you an ex-officio member of the board?
No, I'm not a director. No, we paid employees of Sunnyfield are in the constitution or allowed to be directors or on the board at all.
And as I said earlier, I'll come to your specific role, but you report to the board, is that right?
That is correct.
Now, are you aware as to whether any member of the board has worked directly in disability services, either for Sunnyfield or any other private employer, a private provider?
Yes, I am.
Who has worked in the disability service area?
Melissa Hamel.
Anyone else?
Not to my knowledge.
And Melissa Hamel is, I think you said, the descendant of the founders of Sunnyfield.
That's correct.
So, one, only one of the directors has worked in the provision of disability services, is that right?
I believe that's the case.
Do you know, and the answer to this might be obvious, but have any of the directors ever worked in a group home or in shared independent living settings?
My understanding is a number of directors have relatives and they've worked very closely and been volunteers in Sunnyfield's past in terms of shared living homes. I certainly also would believe that Melissa Hamel would have an understanding about shared living homes.
Now, looking at these directors, do you know if any of them have ever worked as disability support workers?
Not to my knowledge.
And is it the case that there's no representation on the board of the employees and specifically those who might be working in a residential setting? So, there's no representation of the board of disability support workers? Do you agree with that?
In terms of having them themselves having done that role in their previous career, not to my knowledge.
And to your knowledge, is there anything in the constitution that would prevent a current or recent employee who works in one of the forty-eight homes being a member of the board?
I don't believe any paid employee of Sunnyfield can be on the board.
That's clause seventeen point two of the constitution.
What about a past employee?
I think that's a possibility.
Looking at each of the directors, are you able to say whether, and if you don't know, please tell me, any of the directors have had first-hand experience in addressing violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation of people with disability in the roles that they hold in their professional lives?
I really wouldn't know. I apologize, but I can't answer that question. I don't know.
Do you accept that the residents and the people who receive services from Sunnyfield should expect that the directors do have some experience in violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability to enable them to perform their roles as directors?
I think that would be very helpful and I think also for all of the executive to have experience with that as well.
But that's not presently the case, is that right?
Not to my knowledge.
Is there a requirement for any of the board members to spend any time in the performance of their duties, either at the forty-eight homes, the hubs or the ADEs?
There is a program that was put in place or a proposal that was put in place to the board. So, some board members, yes, have visited our services. There was a program put in place in late two thousand and nineteen, but unfortunately due to COVID nineteen in two thousand and twenty, I don't believe that that was able to be enacted at the time.
If that was the case, would there be a record of which directors spent time in the various service areas? And that would be part of the board records? uh spent time in the various service areas and that would be part of the board records?
Um I'm not aware of such record. I certainly know that all directors have an orientation to Sunnyfield. And in their orientation a day with Sunnyfield, they would go and visit uh our shared living homes and also a community hub. Um there have been on occasions, board meetings at uh locations within Sunnyfield. Um and there have been, from time to time, directors visit various sites. Uh as well as the directors who would understand the specific services that their relative with disability receive. And they would be a part of understanding those those services.
Do the board members hold uh any meetings with any of the two hundred and fifteen residents from time to time?
Uh the board have, di- directors have attended functions um where there have been uh our clients and they have attended those. Um and they're always welcome to come and visit any of our facilities.
Well, it's one thing to attend a function, uh but what I was asking you was about meetings. Meetings, not functions. Do the board members hold any meetings with the residents of the homes?
Um I can't specifically recall.
Do you have uh any knowledge of uh there being any process for the board members to set up meetings with any of the residents from the homes?
Uh not to my knowledge, but there certainly was a process set up for uh directors to be able to go and visit our services. As I mentioned, that was set up in late two thousand and nineteen, but COVID nineteen unfortunately uh interrupted that.
With respect to the family members, is there any process for the board members to meet with the families of the residents through any sort of formal or organised meetings?
Yes, certainly. At the annual general meeting every year, which is held in October, uh the only time that hasn't been held in person was in October twenty twenty. But in all other occasions, uh that has been the case. Uh also, directors do come and meet with uh families and members at various functions and have the opportunity to speak with uh clients and with family members.
Uh an A G M is a fairly formal meeting, isn't it?
Uh our A G M has a formal component, but it also has all of the awards for supported employees and staff. Um and is actually quite a social function at the at the beginning. And uh we have uh, you know, refreshments and a really great opportunity to talk at the end of that meeting.
Uh but is there a a way in which either the residents or their family members can have direct contact with any of the board members about any concerns that they may have? Do they go directly to a board member?
They certainly can.
How would they do that?
Uh they could request that through our complaint system. They could request it uh directly of a director. Um if that's what they requested, we would honour that request.
Now, you say in paragraph three, three, seven, on page seventy-six of your statement, that the board does not have operational day-to-day responsibility. But the board's responsibility includes approval of key policies relating to and oversight of reporting in respect of Sunnyfield's organisational processes for prevention, identification, reporting, investigation and response to violence against and or abuse, neglect and or exploitation of disability service users, you say that?
Yes.
How can you be confident that the board can discharge its responsibilities to approve key policies concerning violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation if, to the best of your knowledge, none of the directors have had any experience with respect to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation?
All of the directors have completed the uh N D I S orientation model, ma- uh module. Um all of the directors, my understanding, take it very seriously about their duties. Uh our board actually requested that in addition to prior to the new N D I S um uh employment checking process that was introduced this year in February. But prior to that, would have a police check and a working with children check. Uh and my understanding is directors also have attended, um some directors have attended N D S forums, various other educational um uh programs. Um and also uh listen very closely to our director, uh Melissa Hamel, who has quite a depth of experience in these matters and take these duties very seriously.
And you're confident that that's sufficient for the directors to be able to discharge their responsibilities in approving in approving policies directed to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation?
Sunnyfield has a very strong continuous improvement philosophy. Needless to say, the matters that happened at the house, that is the subject of this commission's inquiry, um caused grave concern for the organisation and we would certainly never ever want that to ever happen again. And so, you know, we are always open to how we can improve what we do.
Well, it's one thing, isn't it, to say we don't want that to happen again, but isn't the key that you have a board that can discharge its responsibilities not to act after the event, but to have prevented violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation? Would you agree?
I would agree that everyone at Sunnyfield who is aware of this matter would uh be absolutely committed that we never have a case or incident like this and that we prevent this ever happening again in Sunnyfield.
How can you be certain that the present composition of the board with the experience described in the report is the right mix of skills and experience to address violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability?
I think the board have a very professional approach. They're very, very strong in their governance. They're also very strong in their commitment to learning. They have been involved in looking at our risk framework and our risk appetite statement. And like myself, they continue to learn in an area that's quite complex. Um and that we are very open as a whole organisation to ensure these matters never happen again and learn from this.
But we're talking about a cohort of people for whom there may not be a second chance. And unless the board can discharge its responsibilities in relation to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation with the exploit, with the expectation that it will not occur as opposed to what will happen when it does occur, how can you be confident that this board has the right mix of skills?
Um I still, my answer is there. I think the board are extremely professional. I think that they are very, very open to learning. Um I hold myself to account for these matters as well. And I think that uh management and the board uh share a joint responsibility. But at the same time, also have an extremely strong commitment to try and prevent and to be proactive in preventing this from happening again. And so the learnings from the Royal Commission, the learnings that we can have from this particular uh situation, the learnings that we can have from the sector and from people with disability, uh all of those learnings are very important to us. And I believe that the board is very positive in embracing those learnings.
Would you agree with me, looking at the composition of the board, but for relying on the perspective of those members who have a family member with disability? Is the board has no first-hand experience or perspective from a person with lived experience of disability? Do you accept that?
I think that there is a great diversity on the board. There are people who have had lived experience. We have quite a significant folk who have been involved in family members. We have a board that has quite diverse skill sets. Um and they bring different perspectives. And I think they bring different perspectives that really add to a a good, you know, overall um broad approach. Um but can we always do things better? Absolutely.
Can I turn uh now to the senior leadership?
Sorry, have you finished with the board?
Yes, uh for the time being, yes.
Alright. Um I think you just said that, uh at least if I understood you correctly, that there are board members or have been board members with lived experience of disability. Which of the twelve board members have had lived experience with disability?
My apologies if I'm stated it incorrectly. I meant that they'd had a close family relative.
Thank you. I I I may have misunderstood you. Thank you for that. Of the twelve board members, as as I understand the descriptions, and I don't doubt their professionalism, but I think the question is professionalism in what respect? Nine of the twelve are business people, are they not?
Um they come from all walks of life, actually. I need to look at the paper again.
Do they really come from all walks of life? They're all involved in business of one ki- nine of them are involved in business of one kind or another. There's one practising lawyer. There's Ms Hamel, who is described as a registered nurse and health manager of the Cerebral Palsy Alliance. And there's one professor of medicine who has apparently retired from the board. It does give the impression, doesn't it, of a board of a commercial organisation?
Um I think that sometimes one's professional qualifications doesn't always outline other personal interests that people have. And there also their experience with their own family member. So, you know, each one of us comes with our professional qualifications, but some of our lived experiences and our learnt experiences aren't always there. So whilst we do have a very high-calibre board, I also believe that the board has a very strong commitment to the uh, you know, our code of conduct. They have a very strong commitment to the N D I S po- philosophies. Um I think that the board is quite diverse in its nature. And, you know, could we do better as an organisation? Yes, we could.
Yes, I think what we're discussing though is how you might do better as an organisation. And perhaps one further question about this. Uh has there ever been, to your knowledge, a member of the board who can be regarded as an advocate for people with disability?
Uh not to my knowledge.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um I would like to follow up um that question by asking about quite a um a common um approach now to boards of disability services, that you would have a person with a disability who's a leader on your board. Do you have a person with a disability who's a leader in their community on your board?
No, we don't.
Thank you.
Yes, Miss.
Now, um I know it's slow going, bear with me. We're now uh going to look at the senior leadership team. And you are the CEO, so you are the most senior leader in the organisation, is that right?
Yes.
And in terms of your role and responsibility, what are your primary uh responsibilities?
As CEO of the organisation is to uh report, well, my first and foremost responsibility. And I don't know if you've seen our organisation chart, but is the clients and the people that we support uh and delivering quality, safe services to them is one of our foremost responsibilities. Um but as the CEO of the organisation, it is the oversight of of the functions of the organisation um and the conduit between the organisation and the board. Um and to uh, you know, address the issues and the matters, uh developing our strategic plan, our business plans, uh budgets, uh and fair and appropriate reporting to the board.
And uh in terms of uh monitoring your performance, do you have any performance indicators or?
Uh there is a performance appraisal process uh that the board uh is involved in. Um that performance appraisal process um has a criteria in regards to uh what is done and how it is done.
And uh are there any particular indicators that uh require your performance to be measured against outcomes concerning complaints?
Um we have K P I's that are set uh in addition to our business plan and our budgets. There is also key performance indicators that do relate around um the quality of services for our clients.
Do you have a a key performance indicator with respect to the person-centred policy that we looked at before the break?
I'm not specifically aware of one.
And uh I would appreciate that your day-to-day role is very busy. But how much of your day-to-day role involves uh being on-site at any of the forty-eight homes?
Uh I do visit the sites. Unfortunately, last year um during COVID nineteen.
Can I just get, come back to the question that I asked you? How much of your day-to-day role requires being on-site at any of the forty-eight homes?
Uh I do visits uh to various sites. I would most probably get out to uh do a day visit once a quarter, if not more frequently.
Once a quarter?
Mm-hmm.
If you did once a quarter, then uh my maths is not great, but that means you wouldn't get out to see all of the forty-eight homes in the course of
Twel- twelve years.
A few. Would that be right?
I wouldn't spend a day in each facility, but I do go to um have various uh visits and go to various sites.
If if you're having a visit, what would be an hour or so?
It could be an hour or two, yes.
Have you ever spent a whole day in one of the forty-eight homes? Watched the the whole of the day?
I haven't spent a whole day, but I've spent a half a day.
And that would be the most time you would have spent, half a day?
I believe so.
And how often do you organise any meetings or engagement with the residents at the forty-eight homes? You organise a forum for them?
Whenever I go to the homes, I always do speak with the residents. That's my first and foremost thing. Um I I'm very careful about visiting homes because it is actually the client's home. And so, you know, that isn't something to be taken lightly, to go and visit their actual home. Um I haven't sat down with specific meetings, but I have sat down individually with clients and asked them about uh how they're finding things, um any, and have a conversation with them about the service.
Do you organise any particular forum for the residents to get together as a group and to engage with you in uh any way about the nature of the services they receive or any concerns they have about their services?
In shared living, um I haven't specifically done that. Um but we do have forums from time to time. Uh we've had forums in our employment services area, which I've been to. Um we've had meetings in community services hubs. Um generally speaking, if I go to a shared living home, uh there may be residents sitting together. Um but by and large, most of those are conversations are individual conversations.
And what training have you had specifically in terms of communication with people with intellectual disability and particularly the cohort of the two hundred and fifteen people who lived, live in the shared independent living settings?
I've not had any specialised training other than um what I've learnt since I've been employed at Sunnyfield.
No, no specialised training?
No.
And when you say what you've learnt at Sunnyfield, can you assist us in terms of what that learning is with respect to communication?
Um my learning is to be able to sit with someone respectfully without a lot of noise or interference. Uh to uh, you know, be very understanding. I do know a lot of the clients at Sunnyfield and they know me, um to sit with them, uh listen to them. Um a number of our clients are non-verbal, to uh be able to uh interact with them, uh to read body language, to be very patient and slow um and take the time to be respectful um and what communication they may give me.
And so this learning's come from the visits that you do from each quarter, is that right?
I I enjoy speaking with residents. There are uh clients who are also interact at um our offices. Um and so I would see clients, various different clients, uh quite regularly in actual fact.
Uh now, have you had any specific training with respect to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability?
Not, not other than our organisational training. I have undertaken our organisational training and done that training. I've also completed the N D I S uh worker I've also completed the NDIS, uh, worker orientation module, um, and also completed the Sunnyfield training.
Have you had any specific training in trauma-informed approaches to interviewing people?
No, I have not.
Have you had any training in trauma-informed approaches generally?
No, I have not.
Can I ask you about the rest of the senior leadership team? And you described the leadership team at paragraph three hundred and six, at page seventy-one, so it will be your three oh six, uh, I'm not sure what page. Have you got three oh six?
Yes, thank you.
Now, all the members of the senior leadership team are responsible for the oversight of their relevant teams at Sunnyfield?
Yes.
That responsibility includes managing all concerns and processes, particular to each team, in order to prevent, detect, respond to any risk of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation of people with disability. So just pausing there. In terms of the senior leadership team, and I assume that includes you?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know if any of the members of the senior leadership tra- team have undertaken any specific training with respect to preventing, detecting or responding to the risk of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation of people with disability?
I believe that all of the senior leadership team have completed their NDIS orientation worker module. They have completed that, and there will be, uh, depending on the nature of the person's role, the staff would have all completed our internal training processes. And depending on the particular role of individuals, some of them may have completed more in-depth training.
Would it, from the best of your knowledge, that the training of the senior leadership team would reflect the training that you've described you yourself have undertaken, is that right?
Uh, there may be, and I don't know the answer to the question, that some of the, uh, leadership team may have taken further training in some more specific areas, but I, I couldn't answer that question directly.
Now, I just wanted now to turn to who constitutes a senior leadership team in terms of roles and what their responsibilities are. So at paragraph three oh six, sub-paragraph A, there is the general manager, quality, risk and compliance. And that person is responsible for the operation and supervision of Sunnyfield's complaints and feedback system. The response team via supervision with the client safeguarding team, and for the conduct of quality audits. And then the paragraph goes on to describe a little more about the general manager for, uh, quality, risk and compliance role, okay. Now, that's a sort of very high level description. But if the Royal Commissioners wanted to know, what does that person do on a day-to-day basis? What occupies that person's, uh, role, what sorts of issues is the general manager QRC dealing with? Can you help us with that?
Yes, certainly. So, uh, that role, I would like to just explain, that role previously was company secretary and quality, risk and compliance, and it's only recently been made, um, dedicated to, uh, quality, risk and compliance.
When did that change occur?
Uh, at the end of January this year.
This year, alright, and but prior to that, uh, because we've seen in the material and we'll come to that, I think reference has been made to Jonathan Swain.
Yes.
And he was the company secretary.
But he was also in charge of quality, risk and compliance.
And, um?
So he was jet company secretary and I think general manager of corporate, and corporate was the quality, risk and compliance team.
And because he, I'll, I'll just deal with this now, because he sort of features in some of the documents I'll need to take you to later, what were his particular, uh, qualifications and his professional background?
Uh, his professional background for Jonathan Swain was he's a lawyer.
A lawyer, do you know anything about where he's worked as a lawyer?
Um, I understand he'd previously worked at Clayton Newt's and some other law firms.
And when you say a lawyer, uh, and again, if you don't know, that's fine, but what, how much seniority did he have? Was he a very experienced lawyer, thirty years or a fairly new lawyer?
Oh, I don't believe he was a junior lawyer, but I, I'm sorry, I don't fully understand the, the, the hierarchy of the legal system.
That's fair enough, he might not be the only one. Uh, did you recruit him?
Yes.
Alright, and, uh, what were the particular skills or qualifications that you had that thought, um, that you thought he was appropriate for this type of job?
Oh, um, he's an extremely professional person of great integrity. Um, he had the legal background, he'd been experienced as a company secretary. Uh, he also had, uh, a very impartial and integrous approach to oversight of the quality assurance function, the risk management function, uh, and our compliance function.
When was he appointed?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I can't recollect the date.
But roughly.
Oh, I, I do apologise, I can't recollect the date, but he was certainly there in two thousand and eighteen.
Would it help you that, uh, he was certainly in the role as at June twenty fifteen?
I could, yeah, thank you.
When, uh, you or the organisation appoint somebody to that position, is there a selection committee?
Absolutely, yes. Um, all senior leadership team positions, uh, will involve, uh, our general manager of, uh, people learning and culture or, or human resources, it also involves a committee of the board.
And who on the board was on the selection committee that appointed, uh, Mr Swain?
I can't recall specifically, there is usually, uh, a, a small group of people. It could involve the chair, it could involve the chair of the HR, renumeration nomination committee, and usually another director as well, but I, I wouldn't be able to just tell you, I'm sorry, right now, exactly who was on that committee.
Thank you.
Uh, now, can I ask you about the next member of the senior leadership team, which is Commissioners on page seventy-two, paragraph three oh six, sub-paragraph B. And this is the general manager shared living. And that person is responsible for approving policies, procedures and work instructions for shared living, appointment of recent regional managers and service coordinators, supervision of regional managers, closure of response team matters, actioning complaints and feedback matters that are not the response team matters, and coordinating the PLC on staff performance issues. Alright, so pausing there, I am going to ask you some questions later on about the response team and the response team's particular responsibilities. And I am also going to ask you later on about regional managers, service coordinators and other employees. So, against that background, can you tell the Royal Commission, what are the day-to-day responsibilities of the general manager shared living? What, what would she do on a, a day-to-day basis?
Um, certainly. Uh, the general manager of shared living is part of the senior leadership team, so she's part of the oversight of the whole organisation's, uh, review. Uh, but she also specifically is heading up the shared living portfolio and, uh, has a very strong focus around the quality of service delivery, uh.
What does that, what does quality of service delivery mean?
Uh, quality of service delivery means the fitness per, per purpose of what the, uh, clients are expecting, uh, in terms of their NDIS goals, uh, their NDIS plans, uh, their NDIS, uh, funding or support, supports, um, and, uh, ensuring that we deliver on that in good faith.
And what's that, what, what are the qualifications that somebody taking the role of general manager shared living, um, should have?
Um, well, Jen Love, who was in that role, who we thought was a very good candidate, and again went through similar processes, uh, in terms of recruitment, uh, has a, an MBA. Uh, she has degree qualifications as well, um, and she came from, uh, working, I think, in, um, Vision from Vision Australia, I think was her background, um, and previously banking, but had moved into the disability sector and has been a very keen, uh, advocate, uh, but also learning and spent a lot of time, uh, learning about the sector and involved in developing her skillset around, uh, the supports areas.
Right, now, um, Ms Love's predecessor was Dr Mark Clayton, is that right?
That's correct.
And, uh, he held that?
Although, sorry, there was an interim general manager there, Stephen Russell.
But, um, Dr Clayton was, uh, holding this role of general manager shared living in twenty seventeen and around the time of the acquisition of the house in Western Sydney, is that right?
Yeah, I, he did have a role at a point in time, and I can't recollect the exact dates, where he was involved in assisting our organisation transition to the NDIS. So I'm not entirely clear if he, he was still a senior leadership team member, but he certainly had been for a period of time, general manager of shared living.
Right, I'm just working off the, uh, annual financial reports that have been provided to the Royal Commission that have the different, um, incumbents in these roles. And that suggests that, uh, Dr Clayton was in that role as at thirty June twenty seventeen. But by the next year, Jennifer Love is in that role. So would that accord with your recollection about Dr Clayton ceasing in the role, the interim person, and then Ms Love then commencing in that role?
Sounds about right, yes.
Now, how much of the general manager's shared living role involves direct engagement with any of the, say, two hundred and fifteen residents?
I believe that, uh, she does, and I don't have to talk to her directly, but yes, she does catch up with clients. She catches up with the family members, she has quite a lot of personal contact with our clients.
Is she, out of the senior leadership team, the sort of principal point of contact for residents and their families?
Yes, that would be correct.
And so in terms of any correspondence between the families about concerns or issues in the house or from the residents in the house, she'd be the primary point of contact?
I'm not sure if she would be the first point of contact, we do have a structure where each house has a service coordinator. Then there is a regional manager who has a number of shared living homes reporting to the regional manager, and then the regional managers report to the general manager.
But if I, if I say, if I'm just looking at the senior leadership team, and who in that team is the primary point of contact in the senior leadership team? That would be the general manager shared living.
That's correct.
Now, um, the next, uh, member of the senior leadership team is the general manager people, learning and culture. Now, is that sort of a modern way of saying human resources?
That's correct.
And that person is responsible for approving policies, procedures, work instructions, employment, learning and development, orientation, commissioning independent investigations and performance managing, management matters, including disciplinary matters, staff suspension or termination, with the approval of the CEO.
Yes, that's correct.
And, uh, with respect to this role, essentially this is managing the thousand or so staff and also volunteers, is that right?
Um, volunteers may be probity checked through our people learning and culture area, but volunteers by and large, uh, work with, um, directly through the fundraising area.
And what are the particular skills or qualifications required of a person in this role?
Uh, a background extensive experience and background in, uh, human resources.
And is this the role that holds?
No, not at all, no. Uh, the incumbent in this role and lady called Simone Bloomberg, but prior to her, a lady called Margaret Lombos.
Then there's the general manager business development, who's responsible for the commercial team, who assists clients and customers if they so choose to prepare NDIS plan requests, quotes and contractual matters. So Commissioners, that's paragraph three oh six, sub-paragraph D. Uh, okay, tell, tell us, what does this person in this role do on a day-to-day basis? Can you help us with what the commercial team does and how this person assists clients and customers with respect to NDIS plan requests?
Certainly. Um, previous to the NDIS, this role did not exist. And since the NDIS, we have, uh, in our organisation, a centralised team who, um, assists clients where they choose, but also liaises directly with the NDIS to develop, uh, in shared living particularly, uh, people's, uh, requests around the individual client's roster of care, uh, then compile that for the house roster of care and assist them in their representations if they wish to the NDIS, um, and also with plan reviews, um, uh, any SDA funding, um, registrations of SDA properties. Uh, there is a significant amount of interaction with the NDAI in terms of supporting a person to, uh, uh, aggr- you know, have a plan that's suitable to them. And then once that plan is agreed in, uh, dealing with the contractual matters that go with that, and also then, once those contracts are agreed to, um, setting them up in terms of, um, scheduling for clients, um, and then organising them in all of our software systems and our processes, uh, as, as a client. Uh, that team also has a client engagement team where we, uh, have our, our business growth. Uh, and also in that team is a fundraising team, and that particular individual also assists with strategy development.
How does this person sort of navigate the risk of conflict of interest in the sense that, uh, this is Sunnyfield with a senior leadership, uh, me- team member who is assisting on NDIS plans? Is there a risk of conflict in terms of the NDIS participant making her or his own decisions about plans? How does that work?
Uh, I don't believe so, I think at the end of the day that, um, uh, and, you know, I suppose there's always can be, uh, open, anything can be open to conflict. But I think that what we're trying to do here, and that's what the team are trying to do, is be respectful to what each client would like, um, interpret that, particularly in a shared living scenario, into their individual rosters of support, um, and help them navigate what is an extremely complex pathway, uh, through the NDIS to get the outcomes they want. Um, I don't believe that there is a compromise because all of those, uh, documents need to be what the client and the family want anyway. Um, so they do go to great lengths not to do that, and this is actually a service that Sunnyfield provides for people if they choose, um, which is not funded.
Now, uh, who, so that's covering the senior leadership team, which includes?
There are other members of the senior leadership team.
Okay, and you have, who else have you not included who are?
Um, so other members of the senior leadership team includes our general manager of community services.
Why didn't you include them?
Um, I think it was, I'm not sure why, but there are other members.
Right, and what does the general manager of community services do? Are these part of the other services like the ADI?
So.
So you, is this the case that the senior leadership team that you've described in this paragraph, is the senior leadership team with respect to supported independent living service?
So this is the team that is specific to, uh, the Royal Commission's inquiries, but in the senior leadership team, including myself, there is actually ten people.
Okay.
And the to- the total remuneration for that team, according to the two thousand and twenty report, is two point three million.
I believe that would be the case.
Now, who on this leadership team, uh, is the key person for engagement with external regulators? Be it the NDIS, sorry, the NDIA, the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission or, uh, the Ombudsman? Who's the key person?
In regards to complaints, it would be through our quality, risk and compliance team.
And if there needs to be any communication with the? And if there needs to be any communication with the New South Wales? Or for the ACT, the Australian Federal Police, who is the primary contact for the police?
It would be in the Quality, Risk and Compliance Team.
And who in this senior leadership team has responsibility for drawing up any contracts? That Sunnyfield might enter into with the, its clients?
That would be our General Manager of Business Development and Fundraising.
So General Manager of Business Development and Fundraising is also the person with oversight of drawing up any contractual. Documents for clients entering into supported living, is that right?
That's correct.
And who is the person who ultimately has the authority to make decisions? To terminate any accommodation or other services between Sunnyfield and the client?
Ultimately, it would be me, but it is something that we would do very rarely.
Well, I'll come to how often you have to do it, but I just wanted to know who is the decision maker?
Yes, so I may would receive a recommendation from senior people. And that recommendation would come to me and then I would make that ultimate decision.
Do any of the members of the senior leadership team have lived experience as people with disability?
Not to my knowledge.
Now, Commissioners, I want to move now to the topic of the financial arrangements for Sunnyfields. And you'll be pleased to know that I don't want to spend a long time. On this topic and I'm not going to go in to this topic. In detail for hours, but there are a few key points I want to deal with with respect to the financials.
Just before you do, could I just ask a question about training before we leave that topic? And ask about human rights training around the convention on the rights to people with disabilities? Do the board get training on the, on the convention? And do the senior staff get training on the convention? And have you had training on the convention?
Thank you for that question. Yes, no, sorry, not yes, no, that's not a very good answer, my apologies. We do have training on the United Nations Convention on the Rights of People with Disability. And that is something that is at the forefront of our Code of Conduct, the Sunnyfield Way. And the way in which we approach the rights and our responsibility towards people with disability.
Thank you.
What training is that?
We've all done the NDIS orientation module, but we also have online training modules. We're all taken through in our orientation, the United Nations Convention. That's something that I actually present at the orientation for every staff. For nearly every single orientation for new staff members and I take people through that convention.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm going to deal specifically with the topic of training when I come to. The recruitment and terms and conditions of staff. So I won't forget it and we'll come back to this topic. So can I turn to the financials? So Ms. Karahi, can I ask you to have a look? At the documents in Hearing Bundle B, Volume One, behind tab six. This is the Director's Report. For year end thirty June twenty twenty, which we looked at earlier. And I'd like you to turn to page two of that document. And just read that to yourself and tell me when you've done that before I ask you any question.
May I clarify, is that on the bottom of page two?
The bottom of page two, which is the key financial outcomes, I do want to take you to that. There's a few matters though that I want to ask you just to understand.
I think Ms. Karahi was just wanting to know if she was on the right page.
Yes.
Page two.
Page two. Yes, thank you kindly.
All right, so in terms of this Director's Report. This report identifies some notable areas that have had an impact on Sunnyfield's performance. Do you see that?
Yes.
And if I can summarise this way, one of the significant impacts has been the impact of COVID nineteen. On the provision of services, is that right?
Yes.
And Sunnyfield qualified for the Australian Government's Jobkeeper Wage Subsidy. From April to September twenty twenty, is that right?
That's my understanding.
Now, you say in this report that this resulted in Sunnyfield keeping nine hundred and sixty eligible staff employed. During the April to June period with eight point six million of government wage subsidy. And that's reported in the financial accounts as other income, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, if we look at nine hundred and sixty eligible staff. Out of the one thousand one hundred and seventy staff. That points to the majority of the staff being supported on the Jobkeeper Wage Subsidy. During that period from April to September last year, is that right?
There's a number of criteria for Jobkeeper. One related, I understood to do with the organisational impact on revenue. When Jobkeeper, when COVID nineteen, you know, became apparent in particularly. I think late March twenty twenty, that was very disconcerting, I believe, for the whole sector as it was our whole community. So there were a number of clients that did not want to receive services. Particularly community services clients and employment services clients. We took the policy at Sunnyfield that we would continue our services wherever it was safe to do so. So we did not close our programmes, but we instituted all of the Department of Health protocols. But some people also quite rightly chose not to attend those services. And it did impact our revenue and Sunnyfield was able to become eligible for Jobkeeper. But individual employees also had to register to be eligible for Jobkeeper. And that was a separate registration is my understanding for each employee.
With respect to the employees who were on the Jobkeeper arrangements. Did that have any impact on the staffing of the forty eight homes?
We did have quite a significant change to rosters. There, you know, a lot of our clients who were unable to continue to go to their day programmes. Specifically external day programmes, but also at times our own day programmes. They may not have wanted to and they may not want to go to employment services. So what we were able to do was our staff were very flexible and agreed that they would. People who normally wouldn't work in our shared living homes. They basically took the services that they would have had in the day programmes. To the homes where that was agreeable with the families. And we were able to offer quite a lot of different activities and diversional therapies. In the homes with the staff who normally would have worked in the hubs. We also really made it available where it was safe to do so, of course. All of the community in home supports. So where people were concerned about coming, you know, to, to programmes. And particularly, I think, transport also was a concern for people. We provided services into people's own homes. So the staff really did adapt flexibly, but that took some time and not everybody wanted to take up that option.
And also it notes some arrangements in relation to properties at Alambi Heights. And that the arrangements in relation to those properties and transfers. Have had a bearing on the financial reporting for Sunnyfield for that year, is that right? I'm just trying to summarise.
No, that was a very significant factor for the organisation and a project that the organisation have been working on for some ten years.
All right, so let's go to the key financial outcomes for the year ending thirty June twenty twenty, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
So the revenue increased by twenty two point eight percent. And the revenue for that financial year is a hundred and ten point four million dollars, is that right?
Yes.
Now, what is the explanation for the revenue increase? And again, if you need to look at the more detailed breakdown, which appears later in this report, let me know. We can go to that.
Yes, I would like to do that, thank you.
So if we go to revenue and expenses. At page twenty nine, this is where the notes to the consolidated financial statements appear. Does that assist you in assisting the Royal Commission? With respect to the increase by twenty two point eight percent in revenue in that year?
So you're looking at page twenty nine?
Twenty nine, if that, if that assists you.
Yeah, to compare twenty twenty with twenty nineteen. You'd like me to detail those increases?
I don't need you to walk us through the detail on that page. In terms of each of the line items. But generally, looking at that page, does that assist you? Just in, in a short way to explain to the Royal Commissioners? The increase in, in the revenue, that it was up by twenty two point eight percent? Like, what's the source of it? Is it receipts from NDIS? Is it sale of property? Is it fundraising? I mean, there's a range of items there, but what accounts for that increase?
So it depends whether it's operating revenue or whether it's consolidated revenue. So my understanding is our operating revenue was a hundred and ten million dollars. Of that, eighty seven million approximately was from the NDIS. We also received some governance subsidies. They particularly, it was six point two million of governance subsidies. And a lot of those subsidies relate to people who were over the age of sixty five when the NDIS came in. I think it was called the Continuity of Support Programme and it's recently changed its name. There was a small amount of funding from FACS. Employment Services, who, as we spoke about before, sell goods. A lot of therapeutic goods administration, primary and secondary goods. That was ten point five million. There was client board and lodging fees of four point three. Fundraising was around seven hundred and forty four thousand. There was fee for service, management fees and some other fees. So that made up a hundred and ten million of operating revenue.
But the, it's pretty obvious that the major sources of the increase of. Twenty one million dollars, more or less, in revenue comes from the NDIS. Which was an increase of sixteen point four million or thereabouts. And the sale of goods, which increased by three point six, that's the bulk of it, isn't it?
Yes.
I don't want to confuse you, but it might also be helpful to look at the summary version. Which appears in the annual report for twenty twenty, Commissioners, this is behind tab two in the same volume. You might need to keep both of those open, but if I take you to tab two, this is the annual report.
Yes.
And on page five, there's a message from you, a message from the CEO, do you see that?
Yes.
And in that first paragraph, you say in the financial report, sorry, in your report. In the last financial year, clients served by Sunnyfield grew in number by fifteen percent.
Yes.
And consolidated revenue increased to a hundred and ten million with a good surplus.
Yes.
We increased our net assets to sixty seven point six million. For the sole purpose of future-proofing Sunnyfield. For the current and future clients and families we serve.
That's correct.
That's a sort of shorthand description.
Yes.
Then, if we go to page fifteen of the annual report. We've got some photographs of the board members and the senior leadership team, is that right?
Yes.
And then on the right hand side, there's some pie charts.
Yes.
And in terms of looking at the financial year for twenty twenty revenue, there's a pie chart there. I don't know whether yours is in colour.
No.
And now, I don't know, Ms. Karahi, can you see a screen next to you that has the pie chart expanded?
Yes, thank you.
Does that help colour wise?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so this, and I raised this with you a little earlier in terms of the. Almost fifty percent of revenue coming from shared living.
Yes.
So in terms of breaking down the sources of revenue. Does this pie chart help summarise what is the more detailed accounting style records? That are in the financial report?
It is a summary, so we have.
So are you comfortable working with the pie chart?
No, thank you kindly.
So the Chair just asked you about NDIS revenue and that accounts for the forty seven percent, is that right?
No, no, the shared living.
The shared living.
We have NDIS revenue for shared living clients, community service clients. Our employment services clients and also for support coordination clients. So all of those clients would receive NDIS funding.
Can I put it this way, tell me if I'm wrong, but if you excluded fundraising of one percent?
Yes.
And property of five percent?
Yes.
Is the balance of the revenue, NDIS funding?
There is also some client fees and there is also, as we mentioned. So the NDIS funding is eighty seven million of the hundred and ten million.
And in terms of the increase of fifteen percent of clients over the COVID periods. So that's the last year, what, where are those fifteen percent primarily coming? Is it in shared living or is it in community services or the ADE?
My understanding is, and I need to double check my dates, but my recollection is that it's community services. There was an organisation in the Hunter region called Endeavour Hunter. That became insolvent and administrators were appointed. And Sunnyfield evaluated that situation. And we were very, very concerned about the communities in the Hunter. And we actually did acquire that business. And it went, I need to know the exact year, but that would have, I think, contributed to the growth. Because following our taking over that business that was, if we hadn't have taken it over, it would have closed. Which was very unfortunate because it was insolvent. But since we've taken over that business and worked with the staff in all of those areas and directly with the clients. That business has grown quite significantly.
Is another source of revenue, the rent that you receive from the residents? Whether it's two hundred and fifteen or thereabouts in the forty eight homes. That you also receive rent from a deduction to their disability support pensions?
The client board and lodging fees for shared living were four point three million of the hundred and ten million. And that's in our statutory accounts.
Now, you've mentioned in the annual report a surplus.
Yes.
If we go back to the document behind tab six, which is the Director's Report, back at page two. And at the bottom of the page where the dot points are. You identify an operating surplus and an overall surplus.
Correct.
So the operating surplus increased by six point two million.
Yes.
And the overall surplus was twenty eight point three million. That was quite a significant. Uh, that was quite a significant increase in the overall sur- surplus compared to two thousand and nineteen, where the surplus was three point seven.
Yes.
So what acca- is this right? What accounts for the twenty eight point three million surplus is the transfer of the land?
Yes.
And the Jobkeeper wage subsidies, is that right?
And a small amount of interest.
And it, it's the case, isn't it, that Sunnyfield's financial position was strengthened further with an increase of total assets? And it's described here as the total assets being one hundred and thirteen point one million, and that was an increase from the previous financial year where the asset base was six point one.
Sixty one.
Sixty one point four million, is that right?
Well, they're the gross assets, the net assets.
And the net assets are sixty seven point six.
Yeah, the net assets, the net tangible assets of Sunnyfield, um, as at the end of the year were sixty seven point six, that includes property. Um, and then the rest of it would be primarily cash.
It was twenty nine million cash.
Right.
Uh, so from a financial perspective, is it your view that Sunnyfield is financially sound?
Uh, yes, it is financially sound. The organisation has been building its reserves. Uh, and the reason why it has been building its reserves is twofold. One is to invest in new computer systems that enable the workforce to undertake the significant administrative duties of the NDIS and be able to do them more efficiently because we're very, very keen to reduce admin and to be able to support the clients, um, to spend less time on administration. And the other major reason why the organisation has been, well, there's really three, why we've been building our reserves is that we have very, very outdated facilities. Um, and those facilities are from the nineteen sixties. And we have a commitment to government to replace those facilities, uh, that relates to the property transfer, and we have made that commitment. It isn't showing as a liability in our balance sheet. Our, our auditors, um, weren't sure how that should be representative, and that was the conclusion. But we have a very strong commitment to government to do that. And the third reason is so that we can, uh, hopefully purchase more, uh, uh, facilities, invest in our facilities, update some of our outdated facilities, invest in more, uh, skills for life programmes, uh, and so on. So there is a particular purpose, while gradually over the last ten years, uh, the organisation has tried to build up its balance sheet for investment purposes back into the organisation.
I'm conscious of the time, the last question I want to ask you before lunch, and, uh, if you can't answer it, then we can come back to it after lunch. When we've read through the statement that you've provided to the Royal Commission, uh, there are a number of references to matters being unfunded and funded in terms of both the provision of services and Sunnyfield having to make, for example, repairs to property. Uh, what is the point of identifying funded and unfunded uh, services in your statement? And how does that have a bearing in terms of the overall financial circumstances of Sunnyfield? And I'm asking you this because I may be wrong in the impression that I've gained from reading your statements, but the impression one is left with is that there is a resistance to, uh, take on the funding of these areas that you call unfunded. And I'm trying to understand from a, a financial perspective, is that because it poses financial risk to Sunnyfield, or is there some other reason behind that?
Sorry, I, I don't quite understand the question.
All right, I might come back to it then after lunch. But my question is really directed to a, a reading of the whole of your statement and the many places where you make distinctions between unfunded and funded services for the clients. And I want to understand what's the importance of making that distinction of funded and unfunded? Is it because there is a reluctance of Sunnyfield to have to provide services that are unfunded? And if that is the so, if that's so, is the reason for that a concern about its impact on Sunnyfield's overall financial position? And you're very welcome to have a think about that, and we can come back to that after lunch.
Would you like me to answer now?
If you can answer now, that's good, then I'll be on to a different topic after lunch.
All right, I, I don't want to waste, uh, the time of the Commission. Um, look, there are areas that the NDIS does provide funding for, uh, but there are areas that it does not provide funding for. And Sunnyfield is just aware of what those areas are. Um, yes, we do need to be financial good stewards because we want the organisation to be around for another seventy years. But we are just aware as an organisation, we do provide a lot of unfunded services. Um, and we're aware of those, and we do them willingly and obligingly as we do, helping, uh, clients with their NDIS planning because it is very complicated and quite onerous. Um, but as an organisation, we just are aware of that. It's not because we don't want to be generous, um, in any shape or form, it's just so that we also meet our financial stewardship obligations.
Uh, Commissioners, if that's a, a convenient time, I'm going to leave the topic of finances at this point, so if the Commissioners have got any questions about the financial matters, uh, it may be helpful to deal with those questions now.
Alison, any questions? Commissioner Galblie, any questions?
Um, no, I guess that last answer, um, it would be good to know what, you know, sort of things you feel that some of that reserve could be applied for, for the current residents, um, so that they could have a better quality of life. And there is the question of how much reserve are not for profit or to hang on to. And so that, that would still be a question, it's a bit abstract, but I'd like to come back to that at some stage in the hearing, because I think it's a really good, um, question.
I'm glad you think it's a good question. I'm sure the answer will be equally good. Do you want to answer that now or take that on notice?
No, I'm quite happy to answer that. Um, uh, I haven't seen it, but my team have a five-year working, uh, cash flow model. Uh, one of the things, of course, is that with the turnover of a hundred and ten million, we need to have sufficient reserves to continue to pay our debts, um, and our payroll. Uh, but as I had mentioned, the things that the Board has, uh, really earmarked and management is to replace our computer systems. Uh, the NDIS is very complicated, it has driven a lot of administration. And where we can reduce administration, it means that our staff can spend more time focusing with the clients, um, and that can be those processes automated. We have a commitment to the New South Wales State Government, um, in relationship to the property that sits in our, uh, that we were, um, transferred to Sunnyfield. We have, um, a commitment to them in a transfer deed where we must replace, uh, some outdated nineteen sixties buildings that exist at Alambi Heights. We also, uh, invested in a new community hub in Tweedheads, and we're about to set up a second one in Armidale. We also are upgrading quite a number of our shared living homes, um, both in terms of, uh, compliance matters, but also in terms of, um, you know, livability for the clients, painting, uh, making them more contemporary. So there is a continual reinvestment into Sunnyfield. Uh, we're not just, um, building our balance sheet, uh, for the sake of it. Um, there is significant expenditures expected for that money.
And some of that investment would, would have other funding, I'm sure. And we might try and get the detail of that later, thank you.
You said that, uh, one of the, uh, services that Sunnyfield provides is assisting people in their dealings with, uh, the NDIA for the purposes of the NDIS. But it's in Sunnyfield's interest to do that, isn't it? Because you're getting more funds from the D, NDIS, which go, which go, which go to you.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that the motivation is a financial one, um, the motivation.
I didn't ask the motivation, I just said that it is to your advantage to do it in the end, isn't it?
The advantage is if the supports are tailored to the client and they're what the client needs, then it's an advantage to everybody, the staff included and to the clients, in meeting their direct needs.
And to Sunnyfield's financial position.
Um, we don't necessarily make any more margin out of that. Um, so we may in certain instances, but we're trying to achieve here a good outcome for the clients. Um, and yes, that's a win-win, that's a win-win.
The NDIS has had a marked impact, hasn't it, upon the revenue of Sunnyfield?
Uh, yes, it has. The funding in, um, our, you know, for people who lived in shared independent living, um, prior to the NDIS was much lower, and that's across the whole sector, not just Sunnyfield, which I think created great difficulties in being able to provide the level of supports that clients needed.
The revenue, total revenue of Sunnyfield, pardon me, in the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen year was sixty four point six million, and that's the revenue that's gone up to a hundred and ten million.
Uh, and that's also increasing clients. Um, I would like to just let the Commission know that the NDIS has recognised that their proportion of their budget on shared independent living is too high, and the sector is experiencing reductions in individual client plans of some twelve to sixteen percent of revenue. And that experience we have seen in practice, uh, and in our budgets for next year, we are potentially experiencing, and this is a, a matter of quite some, uh, debate with the NDIA around the fact that the reduction is occurring in shared independent living funding. Um, and that's, uh, because there are, I believe, have been forecasts that the proportion of seal funding to the total NDIS budget, uh, is causing budgetary concerns.
And one other question, would it be fair to say that the job keeper of eight point six million dollars was rather a windfall for Sunnyfield?
Um, the way we've reported it there, we did not report it in our operating line. So what you're seeing there is that it was very transparent, that we reported it below the line. It isn't there reported directly in, in the operating.
But in the end, it was a bit of a windfall because even without it, your surplus would have been six million?
Um, you could look at it that way.
Yep, okay, thank you. Yes. It's now nearly one fifteen, shall we resume at two fifteen?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners.
We'll adjourn and talk to you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Miss Lee.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, Ms. Cudahy, uh, I want to turn to risk management, that's the next topic, because this is a responsibility both of the Board and the senior leadership team. So if I can ask you, if you've still got a copy of your statements?
Yes.
And can I ask you to turn to paragraph three, three, zero? And Commissioners, you will find on page seventy six of your, uh, version. So Sunnyfield has three board committees, and one of those committees is the Audit, Finance and Risk Committee.
Yes.
And in terms of the AFR, that's the Audit, Finance, Risk Committee, at paragraph three, 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 you say that committee is directly responsible for the oversight of the quality, risk and compliance function. And in that role, for the oversight of the response team and complaints and feedback functions. The role of the AFR committee is to assist the Board in its collective responsibilities in relation to Sunnyfield's financial affairs and reports of oversight of financial, corporate governance policy, internal systems, integrity and controls, statutory auditing processes and reporting. In this role, the AFR committee aims to support the achievement of Sunnyfield's organisational objectives and sustained viability within established limits of risk management. So I've just read that out because it's not up on the screen so people will understand what I'm about to ask you. Now, how, do you know how many members of the Board are members of the AFR committee?
Um, I'm just trying to do a numerical calculation. Um, but I think there would be at least three or four. I, I'd have to specifically think of which directors, but that would be my thinking.
And with respect to this particular committee, does this committee have a special relationship with any of the senior leadership team, in the sense that they work very closely with the leadership team?
Um, certainly, uh, all of our committees and all of the board meetings um, do include most of the SLT for most of the agenda items. But for this specific committee, uh, there is obviously a relationship in addition to myself, the, uh, General Manager of Corporate, the company secretary is at all committee and board meetings, um, and also the Chief Financial Officer.
All right. Now, then if we turn to your paragraph three hundred and nine, Commissioners, you'll find this on page seventy two. There is a quality, risk and compliance team, and that team is responsible for a number of relevant mechanisms that operate to prevent, detect and respond to violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation of people with disability. And you set out in sub-paragraphs A through to E a number of those functions.
Yes.
And, uh, in paragraph E, there's a reference to quality, risk and compliance reports.
Yes.
And these are reports prepared by the Quality, Risk and Compliance Team. And those are the reports that make their way to the AFR committee and the Board generally, is that right?
Yes.
Now, in terms of the particular responsibilities of the Quality, Risk and Compliance Team, you've identified the team as being responsible for mechanisms that operate to prevent, detect and respond to violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation of people with disability. Is that the only function of this particular Quality, Risk and Compliance Committee? Or does it look at risk more generally?
So my apologies, are you regarding the Audit, Finance, Risk Committee or regarding the Quality, Risk and Compliance?
Three, three oh nine, that, so the Sunnyfield Quality, Risk, Compliance. So that first sentence at the introduction of three oh nine.
Oh, team, my apologies.
Sorry, team.
Yeah, um, the, the Sunnyfield Risk, um, Quality, Risk and Compliance Team, they're involved in the quality assurance audits of all of our services. They do their liaison with any external audits, which includes the NDIS Quality and Safeguarding Commission audits and the International Standards Organisation audits. There are also a, a separate team within that group, uh, is called the Response Team, uh, which, uh, is also part of safeguarding. And they particularly deal with any allegations of assault, abuse or exploi- uh, exploitation of, uh, people with a disability. They also oversee or contribute to a restrictive practices authorisation panel. Also separately in that team is a compliance officer. Uh, also, we in that team look at workplace health and safety. And that team also contribute to, um, policies and procedures, uh, and, uh, improvement of those policies and procedures.
So is this a team comprised? So is this a team comprised of just members of the senior leadership team or is it a broader team than that?
There is a group of employees that work to the general manager, quality and risk and compliance. But the general manager, quality, risk and compliance with his team, uh, present their draft reports that are going to the board and more detail about those reports to the senior leadership team, which meets, uh, uh, monthly, I think it would be, um, on looking at quality, risk and compliance matters, uh, in addition to the day-to-day interactions that that role and that team has with general managers and the organisation.
Right, and, uh, Sunnyfield has a risk management policy. If I can direct your attention to the document in hearing bundle B, volume two, behind tab forty-three. So that's, uh, part B, volume two, behind tab forty-three.
Yes.
So this is a policy that you've signed off on, on the sixth of March twenty nineteen. Do you see that?
Yes.
And was there an earlier version of this policy? Uh, in particular, a version of this policy in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen?
I would believe that there would have been earlier versions. I do not recall the exact dates of those versions.
All right, can you tell me what was the, uh, change, if any, occasioned by the risk management policy from March twenty nineteen? So what changed from the, an earlier version to this version?
Yeah, I can't tell you specifically the track change causes that, uh, would have been specifically changed. Uh, we were reviewing this policy, uh, in light of, uh, the duties of the NDIS Quality and Safeguarding Commission. Um, our board had also asked us to review our risk management policies and procedures. Um, and the board were acutely, uh, aware to take on board the learnings of the Banking Royal Commission as the board has been interested in the learnings from the aged care Royal Commission. And I'm sure they will be, uh, you know, be very interested also in the learnings from this Royal Commission.
This policy was prepared before you undertook the specific course on risk management in twenty twenty, is that right?
Uh, I, well, I may have been partially completing the early subjects at this stage, but yes.
Looking at the policy statement, it said Sunnyfield's policy on and approach to risk management is in line with the requirement set out in the National Disability Insurance Scheme Provider Registration and Practice Standards Rules twenty eighteen and based on relevant regulation standards and guidelines. These include the International Risk Management Standard and the ASX Corporate Governance Council's Principles of Good Corporate Governance. Okay. Now, Sunnyfield is not an ASX listed company. Uh, can I just ask you, do you know, uh, why Sunnyfield have taken this approach? That looks at standards relevant to listed corporations?
Uh, my understanding was our board has a very strong commitment to good governance principles. And there are many avenues to, uh, you know, benchmark against those good governance principles. And, uh, you know, whilst we are a not-for-profit organisation, uh, we try to aspire to best practice. That would be my understanding.
All right, and the International Risk Management Standard?
Yes.
The ISO three one thousand. What's the relevance of including that in a risk management policy for Sunnyfield?
So Sunnyfield, uh, has got accreditation to international standards organisation. I don't believe we have a, accreditation to the risk management component of that. Um, but in our continuous improvement journey, that would be something that we would consider. Um, we always, well, for quite a number of years have, um, looked at our systems and processes, meeting international standards organisation, uh, processes, and we are externally audited to that. But I don't believe we're audited to the risk management standard. And again, it's trying to, uh, progress best practice.
And, uh, would the NDIS Provider Registration and Practice Standard Rules of twenty eighteen had any bearing on any revisions to this risk management policy?
I'm sure they would have, yes.
Now, this policy says that all, it applies to all Sunnyfield staff, its subsidiaries and associated entities.
Yes.
Now, if this policy applies to all Sunnyfield staff, is it your expectation that Sunnyfield staff are required to know the NDIS, uh, Provider Registration and Practice Standard Rules of twenty eighteen?
Uh, my understanding is that all of our staff have ende-, uh, undertaken the NDIS, uh, orientation, um, modules, which I believe represents those standards. So, uh, we keep a track of every single staff and all staff, um, s-, uh, who are new um, must complete that training before commencement.
But does that require them to have a knowledge of the Registration and Practice Standard Rules twenty eighteen?
Uh, they should have an overview understanding of that.
And what about, uh, staff understanding the International Risk Management Standard?
Uh, I don't believe they would. Um, the expectation is that there are quite a lot of, um, standards, compliance notices and so on. But our policies and procedures are written in such a way that they do not have to go back to the original legislation. Those policies and procedures should be documents that they can rely on.
And what about the ASX Corporate Governance Council's Principles of Good Corporate Governance? How is that relevant to the Sunnyfield staff?
Uh, tha-, that's the policy or the, the principles on which these documents are based. So again, um, they don't need to go back and read the original, uh, legislation. They should be able to rely on the policies and procedures at Sunnyfield, which give them guidance in compliance in, on a practical level.
And who are the subsidiaries referred to on that page?
So at the time of writing this, um, there is, uh, there was, um, uh, the Independence Fund, Trust One and Two, which recently has been wound up. The other entity, uh, other, there's two other entities. One is Endeavour Sunnyfield. That was an entity established to, um, facilitate the amalgamation with Endeavour from the Hunter region.
That's what you gave some evidence about before lunch?
Yes, correct. And the other entity, related entity is Gateway.
And what's, what's an asso-, what are the associated entities?
Uh, they're, well, they're, that's including those, my apologies, but.
So what's the distinction between the subsidiary and associated entity? What does this mean?
In legal parlance, I'm sorry, I, I really couldn't say, but that is the, all of the, uh, the ones I've described are all of the, uh, entities.
Did you write this, this policy yourself?
Uh, no, I did not write the policy.
You just signed up on the policy?
No, I don't just sign off on things. Um, I do read them.
Who wrote the policy?
Uh, back in March two thousand and nineteen. I'm sorry, I couldn't recollect. But I would believe that it would have been contributed substantially by our quality, risk and compliance team.
Uh, it, it, just looking at those first two parts, policy statement and application of policy, uh, it's a fairly sort of legalistic description of a policy statement and an application of a policy. Would you agree?
Um, yeah, I don't have a lot to compare with. Um, I think, you know, risk management is something that, um, the organisation does take, um, seriously. Um, and I, yeah, I couldn't comment because I don't have a comparison.
Right, the policy implementation is the next paragraph. And that sets out that Sunnyfield aims to achieve best practice in the management of risks that potentially threaten, sorry, of risks that potentially threaten adversely impact on the organisation, its functions, objectives, operations, assets, staff, contractors, volunteers. And then we get to clients and then members of the public or are associated with the new business and services. Can you explain to me what that actually means?
So I think that's fairly all encompassing, saying that this policy statement applies to, uh, the broad and wide aspects of the, what the organisation does and what it's trying to do and those key stakeholders, that it's achieving those services for. That's my interpretation of that.
Well, can I suggest to you a fair reading of it, that it puts in terms of risk management at the top of the risk management concerns is the impact on the organisation, its functions, objectives, operations, et cetera. And that clients come after the organisation from, uh, the management of risks. Do you accept that that may be open on reading this paragraph?
Um, no, I don't think it's prioritising in any particular order the importance, um, thereof. Uh, I, I wouldn't say that that's how I would interpret it. I certainly know that at Sunnyfield, um, where, as far as we're concerned, our clients come first. Uh, we have, our organisation chart has our clients at the top of it. Um, our new strategy is around clients and being customer-led. Um, I wouldn't read that into this.
But the policy implementation doesn't put clients first or at the centre, does it?
Um.
Have a look at in managing risk, Sunnyfield, and then there's a number of dot points.
Yes.
There's nothing in those dot points that identify clients or the recipients of services. Do you agree?
I don't believe those dot points are dealing with stakeholders. I think they're more around, uh, process issues.
That's right. This is managing risk for Sunnyfield.
Mm-hmm.
And in managing the risk for Sunnyfield, uh, the issue of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation is not part of the identified points here for managing risk. Agree with that?
Uh, it's not written here explicitly, but I believe implicitly, uh, everyone at Sunnyfield would believe that that's what we're there to do.
It, this is a policy really directed to managing corporate risk rather than risk to the recipients of services. Would you agree?
Uh, it could present that way.
Looking at the responsibilities, it's the responsibility of board members to set the culture, appetite, framework and objectives of risk management within Sunnyfield and resource appropriately. What does that mean?
Um, the board does. We have a separate risk appetite statement. We have a risk framework and they do set very clear objectives around risk management. Uh, and that, that is the process in which the board, uh, oversees its governance.
And what does the reference to setting a culture of risk management mean?
Um, I believe that's about the board's leadership, um, in regards to a zero tolerance approach to, um, abuse, neglect, uh, exploitation, uh, or any harm of, of clients.
Doesn't say that, does it?
Uh, it's in other documents.
Which other document?
It is in the risk framework and the risk appetite statement.
We'll come to those in a moment, then you can show me where they are.
And there's some KPIs, I believe, as well.
In terms of responsibility, this policy states that it is the responsibility of all staff, agency staff, contractors and volunteers to comply with this policy and associated processes, including to identify, analyse, evaluate, respond, monitor, report and communicate risks associated with any activity, function or process within their relevant scope of responsibility and authority. That is, you'd agree, a very heavy onus on all staff and people who are volunteers.
Yes.
How do all staff, agency staff, contractors and volunteers? How are they equipped to identify, analyse, evaluate, respond, monitor, report and communicate risks? How's that done?
In practice, that is done through our complaints process, complaints feedback process. It's done through our incident management reporting system. It's done through our response team reporting. It is done through, uh, the whistleblower external service. And, uh, if, uh, people so wish to go to, uh, other external bodies such as the NDIS Quality and Safeguarding Commission.
Is that what the, the responsibilities are intended to do, is to set up complaint mechanisms?
I believe that that is a, a strong part of this.
How is that identifying, analysing, evaluating, responding, monitoring, reporting and communicating risks? That only picks up reporting and communicating risks, doesn't it?
Well, one, first people need to identify the risk, um, they need to.
Pause in there. How are all staff, agency staff, contractors and volunteers equipped to identify risk? And what risk are they identifying?
So they're trained. They're trained in workplace health and safety. We have induction for all staff and our volunteers and contractors. We also have training in safeguarding. So we do ask all of our staff to identify if there are risks around client safety, risks around staff safety, property safety. Uh, the analyse in there would be to assess that that, uh, um, is an inappropriate risk, um, to be able to say that that risk, um, is not proper and that they need to make the situation safe then and there, um, and that they would report that risk.
Do you feel, uh, at the present time that all staff, agency staff, contractors and volunteers are equipped to identify a risk?
I believe that, um, people are equipped to identify a risk. Um, I think that, you know, we work within the Workplace Health and Safety Act as well as under the NDIS Quality and Safeguarding Commission requirements. And if people see a risk and they feel that that risk is unacceptable or a concern, we do encourage people to report that risk.
What about analysing, evaluating risk? How are they equipped to do that?
Um, so a risk may be that, um, uh, let me, can I give an example possibly? Um, in our employment services, um, if there was a pallet that someone had stored incorrectly uh, on the side like this, rather than flat on the ground, that they would be able to identify that that is a risk. They would analyse that that potential risk is there, that it would fall. Um, and they would either, uh, you know, find somebody else to help them to put that pallet down on the ground. Or, uh, they would organise to communicate with somebody and report that so that situation could be rectified, which would then present a danger or present, prevent a danger to somebody. So it doesn't necessarily, uh, it can be a very practical situation. Um, but for people who are much further trained in these matters, it can be something that's more sophisticated.
All right, now, there is, uh, I think you've mentioned a risk management framework and a risk management procedure. So can I take you first to the risk management procedure? Now, that is a document behind tab forty-five in the same volume. And I'll ask you just to have a look at that so you identify the document that I'm on. It says it was last reviewed August twenty eighteen.
Yes.
Are you familiar with this document?
Yes.
And, uh, what, what is the purpose of this document?
Um, this document sets out the, uh, procedure, uh, to, uh, identify, um, assess, decide controls, implement controls, monitor and review risks. Uh, and it talks about, uh, you know, internal audits, external audits and so on. So it's, um, there is also a risk management framework that also goes with the risk policy and this document.
All right, just the risk, so just so we keep a track of the documents, the risk management framework is the document immediately before that, at tab forty-four of the volume, is that right? And that was last reviewed on twenty seven February twenty nineteen?
Yes, thank you.
So to understand the operation of the policy, you need to be. So to understand the operation of the policy, you need to be familiar with the risk management framework.
Yes.
And the risk management procedure.
Yes, they provide the, um, operational framework and then the practical implementation of the policy.
And just looking at the respective dates. The risk management procedure has been in place in this form since August twenty eighteen.
I believe so.
Then the risk management framework is a later document.
Yes.
February twenty nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
And the policy to which, as I understand it, both those documents relate, is the more recent policy from March twenty nineteen.
Yes.
So the policy comes after the procedure and the framework.
In terms of revision dates, but that policy was there beforehand, so there would have been a prior version, I would understand of that policy, and that policy was updated at that date.
All right. Now, looking at the risk management procedure. This paragraph one says training and resources, all staff are trained in risk management principles, including a summary of, and then in capitals, key corporate risks that Sunnyfield face, and risk management policy and framework and this procedure as part of their onboarding programme.
Mm-hmm.
So when you spoke a moment ago about all staff, agency staff, contractors and volunteers, the training that you referred to is training that is provided when they commence employment, is that right?
We have, um, depending on the specific risk category and the risk class, um, and in this instance, uh, preventing and responding to, uh, allegations of assault, abuse or neglect or complaints thereof, um, staff are trained, uh, in terms of their onboarding programme and also, um, they also have, uh, regular, um, refresher training.
But I've just, what I'm trying to, to understand is what sorts of risks these policies and procedures attach to? Because if, if you have a look at this document, risk management procedure.
Mm-hmm.
And you look at roles and responsibilities.
Yes.
Which, uh, separate out responsibilities for senior leadership team members and other particular managers and then more, uh, lower level employees. And you turn over the page, this is very much a work health and safety approach to risk management, is that right?
Um, I'm sorry, I couldn't comment on that from a, uh, that's not my understanding.
All right, well, have a look at page, have a look at page two of nine, which says the risk management process.
Hmm. May I please refer you to, if you wouldn't mind, in the risk framework document?
I'll, I'll come to the risk framework.
Cause that sets out the risk classes.
But I wanted to, I'm trying to understand how these three different documents work together.
Mm-hmm.
So if you have a look at page two of nine, how risks are identified? The identification of the risks is through work health and safe, work health, safety, inspection checks, then audits, then community visitors, then feedback and complaints, client risk assessments, et cetera. So there's eleven ways to identify a risk.
Mm-hmm.
None of the risk identification factors specifically focus on violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation, do they?
Um, I believe that the way in which this is structured is not, um, it's saying that there's multiple ways that any type of risk can be, um, identified. So, uh, it could be violence, abuse, neglect of, of clients, it could be workplace health and safety, it could be, uh, medical incidences, it could be, um, you know, property incident, uh, risks. I think this is looking at it from more of a process point of view, rather than from a specific point of view.
You, you don't have a, a specific framework for violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation, do you?
We do, we have a separate document that's called preventing and responding to a client abuse neglect, and there is a separate policy and procedure around that.
Well, that, that's not in the risk identification approaches.
Yeah, it's, it, this is a process view of it, uh, rather than on the specific topic of what the matter is. And we do have dedicated documents that cover, um, those specific areas, as we do a dedicated document on complaints and feedback.
There's a operational risk matrix which appears at page five of nine. And then over the page, there is a corporate risk m- matrix that appears on page six of nine. There isn't, uh, a risk matrix for violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation in terms of risk of that nature standing alone, is there?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
Looking at the operational risk matrix, the way this, and please jump in, but the way the matrix works is that you identify particular areas where there may be a risk impact, and then you make an assessment about the degree of risk from insignificant to critical, is that right?
Uh, yes, that's what the.
And from an operational risk matrix perspective, the question of the areas or areas of impact are safety, health and wellbeing, reputation, fina- and financial risk. You agree with that?
Yes.
From a corporate risk perspective, it's people, delivery, compliance, reputation and financial.
Mm-hmm.
There's no standalone area of impact that identifies the clients or people receiving services from Sunnyfield, you agree with that?
Uh, well, my interpretation of that is all people are treated equally here. And in our corporate risks, people is, uh, the first area and they're all treated equally. And likewise, in the operational risk, the safety of people and the health wellbeing of people.
Well, let, let's have a look at, well, let's look at the corporate risk matrix on people.
Mm-hmm.
The insignificant risk is temporary loss of key people. That's talking about staff, isn't it? Not talking about clients.
Yeah, you could read it that way, you're right.
Well, let's read across, minor risk, minor impact on staff, that's staff people, isn't it?
Hmm, mm-hmm.
Moderate risk, unavailability of core skills affecting service, that's staff, is it not?
Yes, you're right.
Major risk, staff diverted from primary task, that's staff, is it not?
Yes, so that's in corporate risk, you're right.
There is no risk factor for people other than staff identified either in the corporate risk matrix or the operational risk matrix, do you agree?
Uh, in the operational risk matrix, would you not think that under safety and health and wellbeing, that includes clients and staff and all people?
Where does that say that?
Uh, it, it doesn't, but that's my interpretation of that.
First aid treatment, but the injury does not affect the person's ability to complete standard tasks, do you say that that applies to a client? This is safety, second column, minor risk.
Well, I think it could be interpreted either way.
Are you serious?
Yes.
Moderate risk, medical treatment with up to one week's incapacity, i.e. unable to complete normal tasks, that's a staff member risk, isn't it?
No, I think it includes both, but you could separate them out.
All right, let's, um, go to, uh, page nine of nine. And this is where I've seen a reference to client risk. In document, it says documentation and record keeping. To avoid an issue being neglected or only a band-aid solution being applied, risks and required action must be documented and followed up to ensure they are completed and the issue is closed. The Sunnyfield Risk Assessment Form is used when completing all risk a- assessments except for, and then you'll see there's a list, client risk. Does that not suggest that when you're looking at the risk management approach, is the risk assessment form does not include risk assessments with respect to client risk?
That's what that says there, but I think there are other mechanisms for that to be recorded.
All right, can I take you to the risk management framework? That's tab, Commissioner's tab forty-four. The framework intent is described as risk management is an integrated part of sound management practices and an essential element of good corporate governance as it improves decision-making and enhances outcomes and accountability. At Sunnyfield, risk management is a tool used to support the achievement of the strategic and operational goals of the organisation. And I've stressed organisation there because it, the fact is it not that looking at the risk management framework against the procedure and the policy, if Sunnyfield looks at risk management from the perspective of the impact on the organisation, not putting the clients and the service recipients at the centre of a risk management model, do you agree with that?
Um, no, I think, um, I, I have a different perspective and I respect your viewpoints. Um, if, on the next page, it talks through the domains of the key risks for Sunnyfield. And our first risk is the health, safety and welfare of clients, and that is our three eminent key risk.
But it's in the context of the impact on the organisation. Do you understand the distinction?
No, I can understand what you're implying, um, but I don't believe that that's the intention of the document.
Looking at, at, still on page one of fifteen, under the heading, risk appetite and risk tolerance, the final paragraph says the board of directors set the type and the level of risk that Sunnyfield is prepared to accept. The risk appetite set by the board of directors provides management with clarity and guides business and operational decision-making. The risk appetite relates to residual risk, i.e. after taking into account any steps to reduce or mitigate risks. And then in that context, you've got the domain areas on the following page which you've made reference to. So this is another way of looking at a matrix around risk. But it's different to the risk matrix which is identified in the procedures. Agree with that?
Yes.
So in the procedures, there was nothing focusing on clients, it was operational and corporate risk.
Mm-hmm.
In the framework, the domains, um, identify health, safety and welfare of clients, that there's a low tolerance for risk to health and safety of clients, is that right?
Correct.
But only a medium, a medium tolerance of welfare for dignity of risk. What does that mean, what does that mean in terms of risk assessment?
So, may I explain? When this document was last updated, we had, uh, an independent expert come in.
This is the document, the most recent update, isn't it?
Yes, it is, but when it was updated in February two thousand and nineteen, um, the risk appetite statement was added to this document, and there was quite a lot of debate. And that debate comes around where people choose to do things that they want to choose to do in life, things that they may wish to, uh, be involved in, that, um, based on a risk assessed approach, uh, we were going to, uh, be supportive of people to make choices of their own control. So this was very much taken from a human rights approach to allow people to have the dignity of risk to choose the things that they want to do in life, uh, in, in a considered way. So if our clients, uh, you know, um, wanted to make certain choices, we would support them in that, um, but when it came to health and safety, that we would look towards a residual risk that was very low. So that was trying to be very focused around the choice and control of clients and the respect to clients.
But none of this risk management applies obligations to the clients?
No, it's our organisational appetite to support the clients. So, and that's still the right of the clients to have their choice and control, and that respect is, is given.
And how is that risk factor, so a medium appetite for risk for welfare for dignity of risk, and then under service delivery, also dignity of risk, is a medium risk? How is that actually assessed having regard to sort of practical considerations?
So there will be, um, we do have risk assessment forms that we can work with clients on, um, but an example maybe you raised before, sometimes, um, guardians or families may have a different view from a client, and an example may be that a client would like a girlfriend or boyfriend, um.
How, but how's that a risk? I mean, I mean.
I don't see it as a risk, but some.
How's that an example of risk?
Well, it is, because some families, um, their perception may be that that's not a suitable, uh, situation, uh, where that's the right and the choice of the client. So, uh, in supporting that client, um, in their respectful relationships. So it's about people's choice, if clients want to pursue, um, certain sports activities, um, you know, learn new skills, um, then Sunnyfield would support them, uh, in a safe framework to do that.
Now, looking at these risks, uh, the question of reputational risk comes both in terms of the matrix that we looked at for operational and corporate, but it's also one of the domains identified here at number eight, do you see that?
Yes.
And there's a low tolerance for, uh, reputational risk.
Yes.
And so that means that in Sunnyfield, Sunnyfield's reputation is very important, and there's a very low tolerance for anyone who may or anything that may impact on Sunnyfield's reputation, is that right?
Uh, yes, as equally as there is a low tolerance for anything that would impact on the health and safety of clients.
Why is there a low tolerance for reputation? Can I put this to, to you? That Sunnyfield has a low tolerance for people making complaints about Sunnyfield?
No, not at all, not at all.
That Sunnyfield has a low tolerance for people making complaints that might adversely affect Sunnyfield's reputation?
No, not at all. One of the things that I think that always has been a strength of Sunnyfield is our membership and what I respect and admire about our members and our clients, and this is something I think that the most of the organisation, a majority of the organisation, uh, holds very dear to our hearts, is that we really do value complaints, we value feedback, uh, we also value praise, and that is something that helps us continually improve, uh, what we do, how we do it, and, uh, as an organisation, uh, we do respect and appreciate that feedback.
Right, so, uh, so can I ask you this? I've got a document here and I, I don't have a copy for you, but we'll make it available, is these risk domains are considered by the board from time to time, is that right?
Uh, we do report back to the board, uh, we report to the Audit, Finance and Risk Committee, and we also report to the board, um, structured around this risk framework.
And do you have any recollection of the board considering risk to Sunnyfield's reputation and the source of the risk to Sunnyfield's reputation?
Um, in specific detail, no, I, I don't particularly.
If I put to you that one of the board papers, and I'm sorry, I don't have the number on it.
No, I want that number.
Uh, I have to find Commissioner's the number. It's from a board meeting on the fifteenth of May twenty nineteen. The agenda item is eight point two, Company Secretariat Corporate Report. It's called Confidential Client Extreme and High Risk Management Plan. And in that report, under the heading reputational risk, there are two risks identified. One is described as a particular individual, and it said W H S Sister and Sister Quarrelent, that's spelt Q U A double R U L E N T. So I suppose that means querulent, does it?
I'm sorry, I can hardly see this document, my apologies.
Can the document be expanded for Miss Cutter here, please? I'm on the second page, yes. Sorry, I'm just. I don't want you to say any of the names. It's under reputation.
Right.
Have you got that?
Yes.
And I'm asking you whether the spelling Q U A double R U L E N T, is that intended to be querulent?
I believe so.
And do you know that the person identified under reputational risk, the first person, that that is a resident in one of the forty-eight homes, is that right?
Uh, they used to be a resident, they no longer are.
Since when?
Um, their relative made a decision to, uh, um, change uh, their situation, and I believe that they, uh, moved into uh, a more individualised support, um, in a community setting. So, uh, that was their choice and I respect their choice.
And that's a reference to a family member who is described as a querulent complainant, is that right?
I believe so.
And the second one you ident, you would know as Melissa?
Yes.
So Melissa is identified as a reputational risk.
That's what the report says.
Well, is this a report that you provided to the board?
Uh, what date is it, my apologies?
On the first page, it's the fifteenth of May twenty nineteen. And it says, I think, Company Secretariat or Company Secretary Corporate Report. Is your report?
I'm not sure who the author was of that report at that date.
Well, you would have seen papers going up to the board, would you not?
Yes, but I'm not necessarily the author of all those papers. The, if the author is the co-sec corporate, um, it's whoever was in that role at that time.
So Melissa is identified as a reputational risk.
Um, I don't, I think, uh, it relates specifically to her guardian, not herself.
To Eliza?
Yes.
And Eliza's described here as a work health and safety and Eliza querulent complainant.
I believe so.
And the management of Melissa as a reputational risk is said to be notice of exit September eighteen, still not relocated.
Right.
Is that right? So that's the management of that risk.
That's what it says.
So the management of Melissa as a risk was to exit her from the service?
Well, I, I object. The reference is not just to Melissa, risk with respect, combined risk by witness. So to put it as a simple proposition, Melissa is the risk. I'm not sure that it is, but it won't hurt to separate it out because, uh, it's a compound phrase. So perhaps you could ask whether the sister was to be regarded as a querulent complainant and whether the notice, uh, was a response to the sister.
Well, uh, I'll deal with it this way, the document is headed Confidential Client Extreme and High Risk Management Plan. So you understood this to be a management plan with respect to clients. Is that right?
I don't believe that ref, reference is in regards to the client. My understanding is the reference is in regards to the guardian.
Well, that can't be right. Can it? I mean, look at the first, uh, entry for Client Extreme and High Risk Management Plan. I don't want you to say the name, but the first entry identifies.
Is it possible to bring that up on the screen? That we can follow it?
Commissioners, we'll give you a, a copy of this because, uh, we haven't redacted the names of the clients.
Are we going to help Commissioner?
I'm sorry, I can't, I'll have to rely on those assisting me.
Well, we'll do it, I'm terribly sorry, Commissioner Gellbally, but we'll do our best to get the document to you one way or another. All right, we're looking at.
I'm just dealing with Mr. Duggan's point, that this is not about clients, it's other things. And Miss Cutter here has just answered that she doesn't think it's that, and I'm putting to her that can't be right. For example, the first category, client risk category, refers to a client. And the nature of the risk is the person's fairly, um, difficult health condition. You agree with that? So the risk is not the person's disease, the risk that's identified is to the client. And that's why I'm putting to you, this is a client extreme and high risk management plan.
Yeah, I don't believe that that's the case, I'm sorry. If the words are on that page, I don't believe that that was ever intended to be the case. And that was not the indication at all. At no stage, to my knowledge, in any shape or form, has anyone ever suggested that, um, uh, the client Melissa, um, was ever, um, a concern from a W H N S or a querulent complainant.
But the client Carl is identified as a high risk, isn't he? This is on the first page.
I'm struggling to see this document, I do apologise, I, I had explained about my eyesight.
Have you got a copy for Miss Cutter here, please?
Maybe we could give one to Mr. Duggan as well.
I've got a hard copy.
Very good.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, on the first page, there is a box that says High Risk by eighteen.
Yes.
And then there are a list of names.
Mm-hmm.
And you'll identify the second name in that box is Carl.
That's my understanding, the second from the bottom?
Yes.
Yes.
So that is identifying the client who is the risk, is it not?
Uh, it specifically relates to the behaviour rather than the client.
But it identifies the client, doesn't it?
Uh, it is realistic, these are issues related to those clients.
So Carl is, uh, identified as a risk for the reasons set out on that document. And what I want to come back and ask you on the reputational risk,
Mm-hmm.
is this document does not identify risks by reference to anyone other than clients, does it?
It relates to the clients, but I don't believe it's specifically of that client. And I'm sorry.
So you're saying that with respect to Melissa?
Yes.
That, that shouldn't really be Melissa, it should be Eliza, and she's the risk, is that right?
Um, regrettably, yes.
So, um, Commissioner, I might leave that document and I might need you to mark that. And I'm just wondering, just time-wise, it's almost quarter past three, whether we might have a short break of ten minutes, just so I can manage this document and also Miss Cutter here can have a, a short break.
Yes, all right, well, we'll adjourn for ten minutes.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.
The Royal Commission is resumed.
I, I understand that Commissioner Gellbally has got the, uh, document now. Miss Cutter here, um, I just wanted to ask you a further question or two about this because I wanted to see if my understanding of this document is more or less correct. Going to page two at the bottom, where there is a reference to Melissa and the sister being a querulent complainant, I must say querulent strikes me as actually quite a good word. We should perhaps adopt that. In any event, um, the way I would read this is that the sister is regarded as a or a querulent complainant, that's clear enough, isn't it?
Uh, yes.
That the relevant situation, bearing in mind that the heading, if you go back to page one, the heading second from the right, which, which is where the words W H S and Sister Quarrelent Complainant appear, that the relevant situation creating a reputational risk with the sister's actions as a querulous complainant?
Yes.
And the notice was a response to the reputational risk?
Yes.
Huh, that seems clear enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, I want to move to a different topic now. And that is the circumstances in which Sunnyfield came to take on the house in Western Sydney. So, Miss Cutter here, it's the case, isn't it, that in around November twenty sixteen, that the families of the residents at the house began some discussions with Sunnyfield about Sunnyfield becoming the new service provider?
Yes.
And were you involved in those discussions?
No.
Were you aware of those discussions?
I did become later aware of those discussions.
When did you become aware of those discussions?
I believe in the, in the new year.
When you say the new year of twenty seventeen?
I believe so.
Right. Do you know anything about the circumstances of the families approaching Sunnyfield?
Uh, I understood that they were seeking a different service provider, uh, that they were not satisfied with their current service provider.
And, um, when you became aware of the families seeking Sunnyfield as a new service provider, at that stage, did you know anything about the circumstances of the existing service provider?
Uh, not particularly, no.
Are you aware that, um, oh, sorry, withdraw that. Do, do you know who at Sunnyfield was the primary point of contact with the families from November twenty sixteen?
I believe Dr. Mark Clayton was involved, um, and possibly also a lady in our client engagement team called Angela Melles.
And, uh, are you, uh, aware that Sunnyfield provided some brochures and documents about the nature of Sunnyfield's services and how Sunnyfield operated to the families?
Uh, I didn't know the full details, we would always provide brochures. I know in the January of that year, we provided them with the, uh, contracts, which are the NDIS, um, commission, or sorry, the NDIS or NDIA benchmark contracts that were our standard contracts, they were provided, uh, not with the details of those individuals, but that was provided to them in the January. And I believe they were provided with information to help them inform a decision.
Were you aware that they were provided with something called the Shared Living Operations Manual?
At that time, no.
Do you know, uh, about a document described as Shared Living Operations Manual?
Yes, I certainly do.
What's that document?
Uh, it's a document that explains for our staff how, uh, it's a go-to document that is a directory to policies and procedures throughout Sunnyfield and hopefully helps them in their, uh, orientation to the organisation and in helping them in their duties working in a shared living home.
So the manual is about the requirements of the staff who work in the home, is that right?
It is particularly focused for the staff.
Why would that be provided to the families prior to any uh, arrangement being entered into or agreement that you would provide services?
I don't know, it is unusual.
Have you made any inquiries as to why it was provided to the families?
No.
Now, um, are you aware that, uh, at least on Eliza's part, that she considered Sunnyfield's Business Development Manager and the Client Engagement Manager? Now, is that Dr. Clayton and Miss Melles?
Um, Dr. Mark Clayton either at the time, I think he was the NDIS, um, uh, Transition, uh, General Manager, and he'd also been a Shared Living Manager. I don't believe he'd been involved in new business development, but certainly Angela Melles was involved in business development.
And, um, are you aware that Eliza says that the Business Development Manager and a Client Engagement Manager, as well as the Executive General Manager of Shared Living, answered her queries and concerns in a manner where she formed the view that Sunnyfield was open to finding creative solutions to particular issues? Are you aware of that?
Um, I believe that was, uh, in Eliza's statement.
But was it the, was it the function of any of those three, the Business Development Manager, the Client Engagement Manager, or the General Executive Manager of Shared Living to, uh, encourage prospective new service recipients by answering queries and looking for creative solutions to issues? Was that part of their role?
I would believe so, yes.
So when, uh, say in this case, the families were looking to Sunnyfield, can I put it this way, that Sunnyfield was doing its best to demonstrate to the families that you will be the right organisation to look after Melissa, Jen and Carl, is that right?
Um, I don't think, I think it's a bit more nuanced than that, if you wouldn't mind me saying so, um, in that we want to understand what the clients and the families' needs are, whether we are the appropriate organisation to be able to supply those needs, and whether we think that there will be, uh, a good mutual benefit, uh, in that relationship.
What do you mean by a good mutual benefit?
Well, not all, not all people with a disability respectfully want to choose Sunnyfield. Um, we do specialise particularly in intellectual disability. Um, and so it's trying to understand exactly what the, the needs of the, the families and the clients are. Um, we would not want to enter in any agreement that in good faith, we didn't feel that we could deliver.
Does mutual benefit mean that you just want to have people who are not going to be difficult or troublemakers?
No, not at all, we really, as I've said before, appreciate complaints and we appreciate feedback. And, um, we're an organisation that is open to improvement. Um, and that's part of the reason why, um, I'm here today. Because as an organisation, uh, we take these things very seriously and we want to improve what we do.
In April twenty seventeen, uh, were you aware that the previous service provider gave notice that it would cease its services and all its staff would be removed from the house by one May?
I don't believe that we were aware that, um, in advance, that they would, uh, exit their staff. Uh, my understanding, the staff left by lunchtime that day. And we were not aware that that would happen and we would never recommend that. Uh, a considered transition plan should occur, uh, particularly because, uh, for the clients and especially these clients who, uh, have quite significant, uh, disability, um, that a very proper transition plan should occur. And, uh, I think that was quite a shock to our staff, um, and a shock for everybody, uh, which I think, uh, was not a good way to transition a service at all. uh, which I think, uh, was not a good way to transition a service at all.
Well, uh, I mean, it, you say in paragraph eighty-three of your statements that you did not, Sunnyfield did not, was not provided with a copy of the cessation notice from the previous provider. And at paragraph eighty-four, you say on the same day, uh, Sunnyfield was informed by the families that they had received a notice. So I'm just trying to understand the timing on when you became aware, when Sunnyfield became aware
Well, my understanding-
that the previous provider was going to, um, cease providing services and remove all staff from the house by the first of May. When did you become aware of that?
When the families told us. I do not believe we had correspondence with the previous provider.
So the families told you that one May was going to be the date?
I believe so.
And, uh, it was Sunnyfield's position that before it could take over the provision of services, that the families would need to sign the relevant service support agreements and the residency agreements, is that right?
Yes, because it would be very difficult to recruit staff and particularly-
Well, I'm not asking you why, I'm just asking you whether that's what you required.
That's correct.
Now, were you aware that this very short timeframe put a lot of pressure on the families?
It put pressure on everybody, yes.
But it put pressure on the families, did it not?
Yes.
And in terms of providing the relevant contracts to the families to sign, it's the case, isn't it, that the contracts were not provided, at least in Eliza's case, until the sixth of April twenty seventeen. That's right, isn't it?
My understanding is that contracts are standard contract.
No, I'm not asking you about the standard contracts. I'm just asking you whether or not you are aware that a lot, that Sunnyfield sent Eliza contracts on the sixth of April twenty seventeen. If you're not aware of it, say, but if you do know, can I ask you just to answer the question?
Specific contracts with the specific details in the annexes for, um, Melissa were sent to Eliza on that date.
On the sixth of April?
That is correct. But they had received contracts of the standard form, um, without the specific details in the January, is my understanding.
You are aware, are you not, that Eliza wanted time to get legal advice in relation to the contracts?
Um, only from her statement, yes, but one would expect that.
And when you say one would expect that, that is because these contracts have a legal effect, do they not?
They do.
And that signing up to a contract of this type can have legal implications for the residents, the resident's family member or representative, and also for Sunnyfield, is that right?
That is correct.
And these contracts were drafted by Sunnyfield?
Now, these contracts are used from what was at the time, the N D I A, uh, suggested model contract. So they are very, very close to what the N D I A recommended.
But these are contracts that were prepared by Sunnyfield?
Uh, based on the N D I A, um, uh, model contracts.
So you, you're making a point of saying that they're the N D I A model contracts?
Yes.
So is the purpose of that to say that the clauses and the terms reflect something that the N D I A requires of service providers or are you saying it's a guide to service providers?
Uh, I believe that at the time, the N D I S was new. Um, there hadn't particularly been contractual arrangements in place in the sector and that the N D I S was trying to set out a best practice guideline of a model contract that could be used. And Sunnyfield felt that it would adopt that.
Did, uh, Sunnyfield get legal advice on these contracts itself?
I, I can't specifically recall, but most likely.
When you say most likely, um, is it your practice if Sunnyfield is to enter into legal arrangements, that it would take legal advice before signing a contract or entering into a legal relationship?
Yes, we would.
And does Sunnyfield have an in-house lawyer?
No.
Uh, does Sunnyfield have a panel of lawyers that it uses?
Uh, we do have different law firms that we utilise for different areas, um, of contractual matters.
And what, and, and what are the firms or lawyers that you use for contractual matters?
Um, in terms of, um, I couldn't tell you to do with the client contract matters. The client contract matters, when we originally set up those agreements, we did have an in-house lawyer, um, Mr Jonathan Swain, who, excuse me, who was involved in reviewing those contracts, um, but-
So he was the company secretary, is that right?
He was, and he no longer works for Sunnyfield, so we do not have an in-house lawyer at Sunnyfield.
Was he, was he an in-house lawyer when he was also performing the company secretary role?
He was, he was, um, his title was not, uh, counsel in-house, but he was, um, and I don't know if he still is a lawyer, um, but he did offer his services in that regard.
Did he have a practising certificate at the time he gave legal advice and working as a company secretary?
I'm sure he did.
But you don't know, do you?
I can't tell you right now, but he would not be offering those services if he did not.
And in terms of the, the firms or other lawyers who you seek assistance from, we've seen in the material reference to Clayton Newt's and also Williamson Barwick. Is it possible that Clayton Newt's provided advice to Sunnyfield in relation to these agreements?
I can't, I, I really can't recall that. I, I would be surmising.
Do you have oversight of any, uh, budgetary matters in relation to legal expenses?
Um, uh, CFO has the detailed oversight, but, uh, certainly I do review our financial performance each month and the statutory accounts.
So could, i- in, if I ask you which lawyers reviewed and or prepared these agreements, can you tell the Royal Commission who that was or which firm it was?
No, I can't because I can't answer that question truthfully because I don't know the answer.
Now, had you yourself ever read the Service Support Agreement?
Yes, I believe I have. And as I said, they're modelled off the N D I S, um, or N D I A, um, model contracts.
When did Sunnyfield first start to use the model contract?
Uh, when the N D I S, uh, first, um, um, was, uh, came into effect. And I think for Sunnyfield, um, that started, um, whether the first agreements occurred in July two thousand and sixteen, but a number of our, um, clients being in New South Wales in one of the early areas of entry when the scheme rolled out, it would be in the months after July two sixteen.
Can I ask you to have a look at Hearing Bundle, Part A, Volume One, behind tab thirteen, please?
Thank you.
Have you got that?
Thank you.
And do you recognise that as Service Support Agreements?
Yes.
And if you go to the bottom of the page, in the right-hand corner,
Mm-hmm.
it says in compliance with Disability Service Standard Six. Do you know what that's a reference to?
Um, I couldn't recall right now.
And it has owner, general manager, and is that business development and funding?
Yes, as I mentioned before, contractual matters are handled through that area.
But it doesn't make a reference there to the company secretariat or the company secretary. You agree with that?
No, because he would not have been the owner. The owner is the, uh, commercial team. Um, and, uh, any legal review, uh, would be done separately. They wouldn't be the owners of the document.
This says last review seventeen October twenty sixteen. You see that?
Yes.
Now, can we draw from that, that this is a template form contract that was current as at seventeen October twenty sixteen and used by Sunnyfield thereafter?
Uh, it would have been used until it was superseded.
And when was this, this form superseded, do you know?
So I do know that when, um, the Department of Community Justice, who previously were FACS, um, who, uh, changed their, uh, leasing policies in regards to the properties, uh, they asked us to change, uh, the agreement form. Uh, and they, uh, put forward a standard agreement in relationship to, uh, the, um, housing component. Um, and then they also had a model contract from Department of Communities and Justice for clients for the shared independent living. And then they also had a separate agreement with providers in regards to a side deed that belonged with those agreements.
When did that happen?
Oh, gosh, um, it, it's been a very long ongoing process. I believe the execution of those has occurred only very recently, uh, but they were backdated and the date, date escapes me.
Could it ha- have happened, uh, towards the end of the financial year in twenty eighteen?
It could have.
And when the contracts were updated, uh, have the residents who signed up to the version of the contract, which I'm about to take you to, have they had their contracts renewed or revised to reflect the new contract?
I would have believed so.
When you say you believe so, are you sure?
Uh, I can't tell you a hundred percent, but that was, uh, a requirement from, um, uh, Department of Community and Justice, and I would believe that that would have been the case.
Now, earlier today, I asked you about the two hundred and fifteen residents and you said, I think one might have been there for about thirty years. Is that, does that person have a contract in this form or the new form?
Yes, all, all, um, all participants that entered into the N D I S would have this, uh, contract, uh, in this, uh, type of form, uh, yes. And that was, um, an appropriate thing to protect their rights as they moved into the N D I S.
Now, um, you wanted the, you, um, said you're familiar with this contract. Can I just ask you to look at this particular document? So this is Melissa's contract.
Mm-hmm.
Agree with that?
Uh, I believe so.
And she's described as a participant in the National Disability Insurance Scheme.
Mm-hmm.
And the agreement is made between Sunnyfield and Eliza, the sister of Melissa.
Yes.
So the participant's representative signs and enters into the contractual arrangement if the participant herself is unable to sign or doesn't have contractual capacity, is that right?
Yes.
What is Sunnyfield's policy in relation to determining whether or not a participant has capacity to enter into contracts of this kind or to understand what the participant's obligations might be? Do you have an approach to determining capacity within Sunnyfield?
Uh, my understanding is that we would first and foremost liaise with the person's guardian, um, or their person responsible, and understand what their capacity and consent is, um, and or, um, any other representatives of that client, and of course with the client themselves.
And what was done in that respect in relation to Melissa in that period between the sixth of April twenty seventeen, when the agreements were sent, and the requirement to have them signed before the first of May twenty seventeen? What steps did Sunnyfield take to make any inquiries about Melissa's capacity?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm sorry, I haven't, uh, um, asked those questions.
Have you, uh, reviewed any documents that might reflect on, on those matters at all?
Uh, not to my knowledge, but if I've forgotten, please let me know.
When you were preparing your statement, did you have a look at all relevant documents concerning Melissa and the provision of her services with Sunnyfield?
I've looked at thousands of documents, um, and if I've missed something, please, uh, I apologise, but, um, I, I can't recall.
But does Sunnyfield have a particular, uh, standard form or way of documenting how it determines a person's with disabilities' capacity to consent or understand or be a party to, uh, a, a legal document like this? Do you have a standard way of doing that?
Um, I'm not sure.
When you say you're not sure?
I don't know.
Well, you, you, you're the one responsible for these policies, aren't you?
I'm responsible for a lot of things at Sunnyfield and I have, uh, an executive team who I trust and rely upon and a number of those matters that they would deal with. Um, I'm certainly not across everything that happens at Sunnyfield every single day.
And the, the, Melissa and, um, her housemates are the recipients of services?
Mm-hmm.
And Sunnyfield has a primary obligation to the recipients of the services, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And so therefore Sunnyfield must have some policy or practice that helps Sunnyfield identify and understand the service recipient's capacity to consent, to make decisions such as entering into agreements of this kind, surely?
And we would have relied upon the guardian and what the guardian had communicated to us in this circumstance.
What if there's no guardian? What do you do?
Um, that can present challenges. A number of our clients are with trustee and guardianship and we engage with trustee and guardianship to help work through those matters for the client.
All right. So looking at this document, the, uh, purpose of the document is to record the supports under the participant's N D I S plan that Sunnyfield will provide. And a copy of the N D I S plan becomes an attachment to the contract, is that right?
Um, I believe that, uh, the, uh, details of that are put in the annexes or the schedules.
And, um, the, the document then sets out the way in which Sunnyfield agrees to provide the N D I S supports and the payment arrangements. Agree with that?
Yes.
And then if we turn over the page?
Uh, which page, please?
Uh, now to page, well, this is a strange document because it has pages of four, but we end up going, I think, to well beyond four. So can I just describe it, two of four? And in the top right-hand corner, there's, um, a document reference number that ends with t- zero two six four.
Yes.
You've got that?
Mm-hmm.
Now, there is some arrangements here in terms of how N D I S funding is managed and how payment is made to Sunnyfield.
Mm-hmm.
Is this a standard term that comes from the N D I S template? Or is this a term developed by Sunnyfield?
I, I can't intimately tell you that. Uh, I don't know that specifically.
But it's part of setting out the funding and the payment arrangements to ensure as far as possible that any funding from the N D I S makes its way directly to Sunnyfield without having to go through the intermediary of the participant's coordinator or family member or representative? Is that the purpose of setting out the payment arrangement here?
Um, it is fairly standard practice, not only within Sunnyfield, but across the sector where-
I'm just asking you about Sunnyfield, not the sector.
Okay, my apologies.
So is that the purpose, is to set up an arrangement in this contract that the N D I S funding goes to Sunnyfield, but not through any intermediary, like a family particip- uh, participant's family?
It is their choice if they so wish to self-manage.
Or how do you have choice in this con- in this-
No, there are clients who choose to self-manage and there are clients who choose to use a plan manager. Um, but the majority of people choose not to do that.
So where in the description on this page, does it indicate that there's some choice here?
Now, I haven't read the page intimately recently. Would you like me to read that? So there's on this side, how is the N D I S funding managed? So there's the option to go through the agency, there's the option for, um, So there's the option to go through the agency, there's the option for, um, the person to self-manage.
Yes.
Um, and there is the option for it to have a plan nominee. Um, so that option is there, um, or a registered plan management provider.
It, it's quite complex, isn't it, to try to work out what this means? Do you agree?
Uh, the N D I S is very complex.
So, not, the N D I S is not a party to this contract?
Uh, but the N D I S offers these forms and that's the, uh, from the N D I S.
Are you blaming the N D I S for the complexity here?
Just explaining that the N D I S, uh, provides participants with options in how they choose to, uh, manage their funds. They can, and they're, they're spelled out there. So we're being clear about what the N D I S, um, parameters are and how people can manage that.
You, you're aware, aren't you, that one of the residents in, uh, the house in Western Sydney uh, his first language is not English and his family's first language is not English?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it's a case, isn't it, that these contracts were not provided in alternative formats in language other than English?
Um, mm, excuse me, I'm getting a frog in my throat.
That's all right. We need a, I think we're very close to time, so, so we just might finish on this one.
Um, uh, look, yes, I am aware of that. Um, you know, uh, I'm not aware the person particularly asked for that, but I do see that that is a very important communication uh, device. I, I do appreciate and respect that. Um, and that is something that, uh, providing our contracts in alternative, you know, in different languages uh, is something that we, we should consider.
Right. Now, just to finish on this point perhaps, so when you look at the box underneath that it says the way in which the participant's N D I S funding is currently managed is set out in Schedule Two. If the participant's funding is managed by a plan nominee or by a registered plan management provider, the participant or the participant's representative must provide the name of the plan nominee or registered plan management provider and the relevant contact details to Sunnyfield. Right, that's a bit, um, that's a pretty important matter for people to know and understand what they need to do, is that right?
That's right.
If we turn to Schedule Two, which is on page ten of four and the last, uh, four numbers at the top of the page is zero two seven two.
So sorry, this is, um, Schedule Two, N D I S support?
That's it, yes. And, uh, you go to the next page, item five, funding arrangements. This is the part that you have to complete.
Mm-hmm.
To, in effect, decipher the funding options as presented in the contract. You agree with that?
Yeah, that's where people elect which way they would like to do their, um, payment through what mechanism.
So, uh, the upshot of clause three is that it leads you to this ticking the box or marking X on the box under item five, is that right?
I believe so.
And in this case, you'll see that the details of the plan nominee, registered plan management provider is Eliza.
Yes.
And from Sunnyfield's perspective in terms of managing the N D I S funding, what is the most convenient, um, option for Sunnyfield? Is it managed by a plan nominee? Or is it managed by the N D I A or a self-managed participant? What's the most convenient for Sunnyfield?
Um, I don't think we have a preference. It's really entirely up to the client and the guardian.
Uh, if the commissioners can bear with me for a few minutes, I just want to deal with a few more clauses in this contract. Otherwise, I'm content we can come back to it tomorrow.
It would be a pleasure to bear with you for another few.
Thank you, Chair.
I speak only for myself.
Uh, I just want to deal with a few clauses in this contract. So could you please go back to page three of four? And at the top ran- right-hand corner, it's zero two six five.
Yes.
Now, this sets out the responsibilities of Sunnyfield. Now, the matters set out in clause six A through to I, do you see that?
Yes.
Are these, uh, part of the N D I A's standard terms?
I couldn't recall.
Have you seen the clause in this form before?
Um, yes, I have.
Well, you would know, would you not, whether they reflected the N D I A standard terms or they were Sunnyfield-specific?
I couldn't answer that question. I don't know the answer to that question. I could not tell you something I don't know the answer to.
If, um, Sunnyfield wanted to set out its responsibilities,
Mm-hmm.
it would have been open to Sunnyfield to refer, for example, to some of its policies such as the Sunnyfield Way or the person-centered policy or the missions, values and statements of that kind, would you agree?
Oh, we could do.
And when you look at what Sunnyfield agrees to do, there's nothing in clause six where Sunnyfield has agreed to be bound by any of its own policies. Do you agree with that?
Um, that's a commitment that we make within the organisation and those policies change from time to time. Um, generally speaking, as I mentioned before, um, I'm not aware of us issuing our internal operations manage uh, operations manual, uh, to clients and families. It's normally considered to be an operational document.
Uh, and that, what that includes the relevant policies?
Uh, it doesn't in, well, it, it's a, uh, we have thousands of policies, procedures and work instructions and forms. Um, it is a reference document, as I mentioned, for staff, um, and it's really about practical issues in the home. We do have a number of our policies on our websites, uh, and we would reference those and obviously we're committed to those. Um, but our documents update and modify from time to time.
I think Ms. Eastman asked you whether clause six, uh, included any provision that required Sunnyfield to comply with its policies? And I take it from what you've said that the answer to that is no.
Um, I'm not specifically aware of that clause, um, but I'm happy to read through here and check that.
Can I ask you about clause seven, which is the responsibilities of the participant or the participant's representative? So that's cast as either or. And, uh, in terms of, uh, the onus on either the participant or the participant's representative, this particular contract doesn't make any distinction. So, for example, it hasn't ruled out the participant being Melissa and just made these the responsibility of the participant's representative. Do you agree?
Yes.
And the matters that are set out in clause seven, which you'll see over the page, do these come from the standard N D I A model policy?
I can't tell you the answer to that question. I'd have to, I go back and check that original document against this.
Then looking at the next page, uh, which is page five of four and it has the number zero two six seven.
Yes.
There's provision for suspension of supports and services. And you'll see that this provides that if any invoice is not settled in full when due, Sunnyfield will send reminder notices to the participant or the participant's representative. Then if the invoice is still not settled in full in fourteen days, then Sunnyfield may stop providing any of the services or supports to the participant or the participant's representative has to pay for directly.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So has, so is this a standard clause in all the Sunnyfield policy in contracts?
Um, and there's a, that date it would have been, but not anymore. Currently. But I'm certainly not aware of where we've ever stopped services because of financial hardship or difficulties. And we say that here, at any stage, if you are having financial difficulty, please tell us and we will review on a case-by-case basis to try and find a workable payment solution.
Why, why is it necessary then to have a clause that says after we've sent you a, in effect, after we've sent you a reminder and if you haven't paid in fourteen days, you'll stop providing services? Why have that clause in here?
Um, I suppose it's trying to indicate, um, that there is a finality to it, but I'm not aware that we've ever uh, invoked this clause.
I asked you earlier about whether there was any convenience to Sunnyfield as to whether or not the funds came through N D I A through a nominated person or the like.
Mm-hmm.
If you have a look at the next, uh, paragraph in, uh, clause nine, this suggests that Sunnyfield will not stop providing services that are managed through the N D I A and for which Sunnyfield claims payment directly from the N D I A unless those payment claims are not met by the N D A, for example, because the participant's N D I S plan is suspended or the participant stops being a participant in the N D I S or the participant's N D I S plan allowances are exhausted. Does that mean that for people who nominate in the contracts to have their services managed through the N D I A, that they have safer protection against the services being stopped compared to others who may, for example, not pay their bills on time and be subject to the clause in the first paragraph?
I object. Um, the objection is this, um, the witness is really being asked for a legal interpretation about a document that she hasn't prepared. If she's being asked what the general practice is, that's fine. But there's a difference between that and what the document means legally.
I rather understood, I rather understood the question to be directed to, uh, understanding of the practice in light of the provisions in the contract. Is that what you intended, Ms. Eastman?
Yes. Yes.
In that case, I'll allow the question on that assumption. Do you understand the question?
Could I just read the clause? Would you allow me a couple of minutes?
Yes, of course.
Just read the clause.
I don't believe that actually that is the interpretation of that clause.
No, I think you're being asked about whether the clause indicates that as a matter of practice, uh, Sunnyfield preferred to have the N D I A be the intermediary for payment.
Uh, no, I don't, I don't believe that is the case. I, I will explain why if I may. Is, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Um, the N D I A are paying either, uh, excuse me, I'm, I'm getting a excuse me.
Take your time.
The funding is from the N D I A, whether it's directly to Sunnyfield from the N D I A, whether it's self-managed or whether it's to a plan manager. I think what this clause is, and I could be corrected if I'm wrong, but there have been occasions when there have been gaps between a plan and there may have been in certain circumstances, three or six months of where there hasn't been funding readily available. But the person's plan is under review. And my understanding is it relates to that matter. I don't believe it's meant to be, um, discriminatory towards people who choose whichever model of, um, funding. And I believe that we have, uh, clients who make that choice on their own basis. So I could be misinterpreting this wrong, um, but, uh, that's how I would have read the clause.
Ms. Eastman, as much as I would enjoy bearing with you for some further time, do you think we've come to the point where we should?
I just want to ask about clause eleven and clause thirteen and then I'll be at an end. So I've just finished this con- this contract or prefer me to come back in the morning?
Well, I am conscious.
I will come back in the morning.
Cuddey has been here all day.
We can, we can deal with it tomorrow.
If, if you would like, I, I'm quite happy to finish that off if that makes it more convenient.
Kind of you, thank you. I'm sure, I'm sure Ms. Eastman will take you up on.
I'll just, um, if I'm a bit croaky, I do apologize.
Fine. I just wanted to ask you then about clause eleven, which is described as both ending and extending this agreement.
Yes.
Now, with respect to this agreement, I couldn't see that this agreement is sort of described as an agreement for one year or two years. It, it seems like an agreement once it's entered into that it will continue until it's ended, is that right?
Um, my read of it is that, uh, the way that the N D I S plans operate is that this is a twelve-month agreement, um, and that it relates specifically to the person's N D I S plan period. Um, so that's my understanding of the agreement, but I believe that it can, if people so wish, um, rather than every twelve months having to get a new agreement, that there is an agreement that can be extended and updated. Um, I certainly know, um, that Eliza raises in her statement, which I very much agree with, uh, the onerous nature of, uh, people with a disability who have a permanent and lasting impairment to have to every single year, uh, renegotiate their N D I S plan.
Right. And this, uh, the agreement with respect to ending says either party may end this agreement by giving at least three months notice in writing at any time.
Yes.
Or by giving fourteen days' notice in writing if the other party seriously breaches this agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, first of all, what do we understand to be a serious breach of this agreement? What would trigger the fourteen days' notice?
I don't know. I don't think we've ever triggered the fourteen days' notice.
And with respect to the three months' notice, is it your, uh, understanding that that notice could be given for any reason?
Um, I believe it's in a situation where, um, that at the end of the day, um, there is a view that it's no longer in the mutual interests of both parties to be involved in the contract.
But that doesn't say that, does it?
No, no, it doesn't.
Now, um, finally, on the feedback and com- on feedback complaints and disputes, that's on the next page, clause thirteen. That sets out that Sunnyfield welcomes, values and responds to all feedback.
Yes.
Uh, is that an aspiration or does Sunnyfield understand that to be a contractual obligation?
I believe the vast majority of our staff do understand that as a contractual obligation.
Right. And is that, um, reflective from the N D I A standard clauses? Do you know?
Um, I couldn't answer that question. As I've said before, I'm not totally abreast of, of, uh, detailed contracts. But philosophically, that is something that, um, I hold dear. Our board holds dear, our senior leadership team hold dear, and that is something that we should have in practice in Sunnyfield. And I really, uh, value, we do have complaints, which we respect. Our members actually asked us to specifically add feedback because they would like to be able to raise matters that they think are improvements or suggestions. Um, and also the opportunity to raise praises. So, uh, that is something that, uh, we should hold dear to. And I am aware that, uh, that wasn't always the case, in particular to this house. Um, that is the subject of this commission's inquiry and, um, I feel, uh, very, um, I do apologize that, uh, organisation hasn't always, uh, lived in reality uh, what we hold dear to our hearts.
Finally, uh, paragraph fifteen or clause fifteen, do you understand that to be that if anything in this agreement conflicts, conflicts with the N D I S rules, then this agreement will take effect as if it had been signed by each party without that provision? Do you un- do you understand what that means?
Um, my understanding, and please, you're, um, more skilled in this area than I am, but I believe that means that this contract takes precedence over the N D I S, um, in that area. If, um, could be incorrect, I just need to read the clause. Which clause was it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, thank you. Fifteen, thank you. Um. Oh, without that provision. So it's saying that if the N- the NDIS rules take precedence.
And, uh, do you know what the NDIS rules were at the time this contract was signed?
Oh, off the top of my head, no. I would have to go and see the document.
And do you know if those NDIS rules that the contract refers to were ever provided to Eliza at the time she signed the contract?
I, I couldn't specifically tell you. I couldn't answer that in all honesty and faith.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, I'll cease there, uh, and we'll resume. We've got some other contracts to deal with first thing in the morning.
And you would like Ms. Cuddey to return by ten o'clock tomorrow morning?
Yes, please.
Yes. Ms. Cuddey, just a couple of matters. Can I suggest overnight, um, it's possible you may be asked about this, to check, uh, the contractual terms that were entered into, you've been taken to today, with the, uh, standard forms to which you have referred in your evidence? You've said on a number of occasions you're not sure whether the contract was to the same effect as the standard terms. You might like to check that overnight.
If I, if I'm able to do that, I will do that.
Thank you. And you might also like to check, uh, whi- which, uh, firm or internal person, um, provided the legal advice for the form of the contract with which we have been dealing. I ask that question in part because the, um, financial statements that cover the year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen indicate, uh, that one of the directors who is a partner of the law firm Clayton Utes, uh, that that firm perfor- perform both paid and pro bono work. And indeed, I think that appears, uh, as a related party transaction in each of the financial, uh, reports for the succeeding years. So it would be helpful, uh, for the commission to know who provided the advice.
Uh, this is in October two thousand and sixteen?
Yes. Well, that's when the contract was, uh,
Yeah, we in two thousand and sixteen.
Entered into, but in any event, who provided the advice, um, bearing in mind that there do seem to have been services provided by, um, Clayton Utes at that time. All right. Thank you very much for your attendance today. Um, now, I've received submissions, uh, Ms. Finesse from you on the question of the competence and compelability or otherwise of the ombudsman. Um, the position that I would adopt is that I would not propose of my own motion or the commission's own motion to issue a summons to the ombudsman to appear. Whether that is something that is in issue for the purposes of the proceedings would depend upon whether a party represented here today seeks the issue of a summons for that purpose. And at present, I do not know whether that is the case, obvious, for obvious reasons. I do not want to be or the commission to be in the position of a contradictor. Therefore, uh, what I need to know is whether there is any party that seeks the appearance of, uh, the ombudsman in the light of Ms. Finesse's indication that the ombudsman wishes to argue that he is neither competent nor compellible as a witness in the Royal Commission.
Um, Chair, can I indicate on behalf of, uh, council assisting that we will not ask you to issue a notice compelling the ombudsman to attend? But we, uh, do reserve our rights in our council assisting submission to say something about the invitation that remains an open invitation to the ombudsman to give evidence voluntarily. And we reserve our rights to say something about his non-attendance with respect to anything arising in his statement.
Mr. Duggan, what's your position?
Um, Your Honour, I don't have any instructions and I would need to seek instructions on that question. Can I inquire as to?
Has this come as a blinding surprise to you?
No, um, we would welcome the ombudsman being here.
Yeah, well, what I suggest, Mr. Duggan, is overnight you get some instructions and if you wish to object or to take a different view to, uh, that which has been brought by Ms. Finesse in the submission filed on her behalf, and no doubt she will give you a copy if you don't have one already, then you should provide some written submissions presumably in opposition to the contentions that, uh, Ms. Finesse has raised, bearing in mind that those submissions raise a host of extremely interesting issues that I'm sure you would wish to pursue with vigor.
Uh, Chair.
Thank you.
Ms. Finesse provided those submissions to me. I forwarded them to the commissioners, but I haven't provided a copy to any other party.
Well, given Mr. Duggan's position, it's obviously sensible for those submissions and doubtless Ms. Finesse will provide Mr. Duggan with a copy with any oth- to any other party who may wish to have a copy. I'm sure the, uh, Commonwealth has a lively interest in how the constitution of the Commonwealth of Australia operates.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. We shall adjourn until ten AM tomorrow.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.